Perfect. Okay, we are gonna get started. So, welcome everyone. So in case of emergency, we can leave through the back of the room and down the hall in either direction to the exits. Are there any agenda changes? Okay, open to the public for items not related to the agenda. Okay. Um. And now, well, actually. Do we have a new council liaison? Do you want to officially introduce yourself in that regard? We didn't really actually cover that at the last meeting.
Those of you who don't know me, my name is Tim Barrett, and I've been with the council for eight years. And we had turnover in three positions, and I was the senior person, so. I was elected Chair of the City Council of South Burlington on the March. Seven three organization meeting. So because of that, according to Helen, who was the previous chair, I am the official liaison to your meetings. I'm going to be right on you every meeting, every second, right till the end. I won't give up, but I might leave early tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Very good. We're glad to have you. Any other announcements? Or staff items?
One quick one that I should have mentioned last week, but didn't. We have a new deputy city attorney who started last week. His name is Jared Pellerin. He comes to us from just up the road, down the road, I guess down the road. He was the. He was the acting city attorney for the city of Burlington. And he has come to join us as our deputy city attorney. So somebody who comes with a lot of experience. And also, you know, seems so far really bright, really sharp, and we're really excited to be able to have that additional horsepower. That position's been vacant for about five months, so it's really gonna help on lots of things, so. Just wanted to report that. I will send you an email a little later in the week. We are working on updates to a couple of ordinance that is. That are related but not directly your work. One is the water ordinance, which will. Go to council in one of the next two meetings with the first draft of the water service area, which connects into all your work in Act forty-seven. And we're working to have that align with your zoning district work. The other one is an update to the sign ordinance that we've been working on for quite some time. The big piece in there is our sign ordinance. Is largely oriented towards a car. Advertising towards carps. And so it assumes that every business and every property is going to have wall signs and a free standing sign. Whereas as now that we're, you know, on the precipice in city center of having buildings that are. Like these ones going up right here with a right on the street, the form of signs needs to change so that we have what we call perpendicular signs or blade signs. As you might see in a place like Church Street that are attached right above the business instead of having a free standing sign, which really is not. They don't, they don't really work in downtowns.
It's been twenty years in coming.
It's been twenty years in coming, so we figured it's time to get it to the council before the businesses need them. So, and then there's a bunch of other things in there as well, but I just wanted to give you a heads up on that when we have the confirmation that they're on. Likely this coming meeting, but possibly the one after, I'll send you a note, certainly. You know, make sure you're in the loop, but. And that is the community chorus, in case you wonder. That's the sound there.
I think Tim's checking it out. Okay, so we can move right into the LDR updates, kind of picking up mostly where we left off last time. Well, not necessarily where we left off last time. We're gonna revisit the dimensional standards, which comes first in the packet. With some of the requested information. Based on our discussion last week, we've requested some other images and things like that. Is that where you want to start out, Kelsey?
That would be great.
I didn't get that. Are we gonna go through?
Yeah, it was not in the packet. They're gonna show it to us right now. So it'll be a.
Well, the, the, the table with the draft standards.
Will your speaker close your mic?
Really? It feels really loud.
That's good.
I was told this week that my in-laws think I'm a close talker. Sign pile reference? No, 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 not close talker, the opposite, soft talker. Maybe that's not the, that's not what they called it though. I don't talk loud enough, I guess.
I do.
We know. It's a good thing, Michael.
Okay, so Paul, Paul is first bringing up the table that was included in your packet. It is the, it is an excerpt from our current appendix C, so it doesn't have everything that's in it. It's just the relevant information for the discussion. To be had. As you can see, it's divided into one, two, three, and three has a couple extra zones attached to it because those were the ones that were remained separate. Because of different uses that are allowed. So C one auto, because auto was allowed. C two has some more light industrial kinds of uses that are allowed, and C one LR is just a little bit of a different zoning district. So those three, and then four is Queen City Park. So, last meeting, we went through a bit of this table, the five thousand square feet for a. Single unit or a two-unit building or a single family or duplex. They have to be the same, first of all, and five thousand is the number that the planning commission landed on a few meetings ago. And then that leads into the divided two family being twenty-five hundred, because it's functionally half of the duplex. We didn't want duplexes that are divided vertically versus divided horizontally to have different minimum lot sizes. And then it shows which unit, which things are, which building types, sorry, are allowed in each district, so one, two, three, and four primarily. The ones, the, the numbers in the boxes are the ones that the planning commission has not yet discussed. I, I showed a few. Sort of conceptual drawings last time, just with, with blanks, but what we, I was asked to pull up some additional. Actual lots and actual homes that exist today and see what this actually looks, these kinds of numbers actually look like. They're not necessarily exact. Part of the reason that we are looking to make some of these changes is some of these lots don't exist. Or they have a different kind of, if they're a seven thousand square foot lot, maybe they have a different kind of building on it than we're suggesting would be allowed. The other thing I just want to make completely clear is that we're talking about minimums and not requirements. So this is setting the bottom basement of what would be allowed. It doesn't mean that. Everybody would develop at this density, and it also doesn't mean that. More likely you'd end up with a little bit bigger lots than this because of some, some other restrictions and restraints on. Where you put parking and where you put the home and the size of the home and the shape of the lot can matter a lot. And other, when you get into the higher, the larger building types, additional requirements like stormwater. Civic space and site amenities, there's all, there's other restrictions that start coming into play. Are you pulling up?
I'm ready when you're ready.
All right, let's go. So this is the first one that I wanted to pull up. This is a lot in the Eastwoods neighborhood. The part, as you can see, the parcel lines and the actual property lines don't line up exactly. So I had to kind of move them a little bit. So all of these numbers are approximate. These are things that I was doing pulling from GIS. But then pulling into a different software and it's all just, it's mostly by eye. It's also at an angle. Most of our aerial photos are not straight down, so there's a bit of a, a slant. So you may see like the edge of a building or the, you know, the peak of the roof line, something like that shown. When I was trying to stamp out exactly what it looks like. In this home in particular, that last little. Piece that's sticking off the back, I believe might be a porch, which is treated a little differently in the regulations, but just for simplicity, I called it all building.
Just as a quick table setting, what you're gonna see in these examples are approximations of what it would look like. Using the standards that were listed in that last tape. So that you can get a sense of, is that the right scale for you?
Yep.
So I was like, why we picked this ones as opposed to smaller or bigger ones? We were trying to get as close as we could to what. Is in this table so that you can get, and maybe you can note if this is in South Burlington or not when we go through there.
It's in the Eastwoods neighborhood.
Okay.
I said that. Yeah, so I picked this one because as you can see, the total lot is, and I dropped units to fit more things in the text box. But it's fifty-five, eighty square feet for the lot, again, approximate, because I had to sort of shift everything. Building, the building coverage, which includes both the house and there's a sort of shed outbuilding on the back that's at the bottom of the screen. Was, is a total of seventeen seventy-nine or thirty-two percent. The lot coverage in total, that's the driveway in gray, adds, adds a bit, so the total is twenty-eight, twenty-nine eighty-one with a total of fifty-three percent. So when we're looking, yeah.
Is there a garage in the main building?
I don't think so. No. Again, what I could see was the aerial photo and this front-facing photo from Google Maps. So it's, it's possible there's something kind of stuck in the back, but I don't, or what I think is a porch, maybe a carport. But I don't think there's an actual garage. But there is that, Paul, if you scroll down just a tiny bit. There is a two-hundred-plus-square-foot. Shed thing on the back, so whether that's used, I believe that's used for as, as a shed, but that is sort of a rough approximation of a very small garage. So the front setback is actually, is about twenty feet. The side setbacks are very approximate because I think those are also shifted a little bit from the parcel lines. They might be as little as two feet. I think it's probably closer to five on the left side, which is the west. And more like seventeen and a half on the east side. And then the rear setback is thirty. Again, just guessing based on the location of the shed, that it goes past the mapped parcel line. So that's pretty close for a minimum lot size for a single-family home or duplex being five thousand square feet. It's a little bit over a minute, a building coverage of thirty percent and a building, a lot coverage of fifty percent. But it's a pretty good approximation, and that's a little picture of what it looks like from the street.
The only thing I would add to this is, Donna, you've been speaking about examples of, based on our development pattern. If there was gonna be, let's say this was a longer lot, if therefore a larger lot, if there was going to be. A way to get to that house, it would need to have a driveway like this. This is an example of a pretty long driveway. It's also sort of a fairly, you know, historic vernacular in this area where the, the garage was, if it existed, was in the back. That affects lot coverage right there, as you can see, because it's a long, narrow one, but that's how you get to the back.
Yep.
So just sort of keeping in mind that that's different from a lot of the homes that we've seen built for the last thirty-five years where it's a short driveway because you go to garage right up front. This impacts lot coverage.
Yeah, this gives you a lot more flexibility, for sure.
Yeah, especially with having the side setbacks be lower, you can shift the home to the side and have that driveway go past. So actually, a pretty good example, sort of a close example to what Paul was just saying, is the next. The next example. Oh, yeah. Paul.
If you just scroll up a little bit. Just on this one?
Yep. Getting myself ready to make it look really magical when you saw the next one. What would you like to see on this one, Paul?
Oh, nothing. I just wanted to say that that's my backyard.
Oh, down this, right over here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So you know, you, you have a sense of, so I guess Paul, since you're so familiar with this spot and maybe are right around here a lot, like, do you. Do you feel like this layout is a pretty appropriate layout?
Yeah, I, I was surprised when we saw the maps, the lots in the neighborhood. I always thought I had a really small lot. And these, there's three, there's this one, the one next to it, and the one in the corner.
Yep.
And they're all the same size and are remarkably small because my lot goes. You know, my, my side is backs up to this one, the next one, and the one in front of it. So it's like, geez, I got a huge piece of property, but. But it's not, it's, I think I have like point one seven acres or something like that, you know? And our acre, and so these lots are, are pretty small, but the homes are nice. I mean, you know, if this is five thousand square feet, then we're not too far off. Because, you know, especially the one in the corner is a really nice home.
Yeah. They are, as you can see in, in the picture, it is a, a single family or a single, a single level or maybe one and a half. I couldn't tell.
Single family.
Oh, a single level, single floor.
Level. I think they have a second floor.
Yeah, it's either a second, a single floor or like a sloped ceiling, sort of one and a half floors. But it's a, it's a, it's a really good footprint, even if you wanted to go higher than, if you wanted to go taller than that. You could fit quite a large home actually on that, or you could reduce your footprint. It's sort of.
And with mine, the same kind of thing that Paul was saying, my driveway goes all the way to back, to the back, and then I have a very large garage in that corner. So I have like, I think it's like twenty-four feet. Garage is twenty-four feet deep, you know, so, and two cars. So, and that's, that's the configuration of mine. And the problem that I had when I wanted to do an add-on was on that. That bottom line, my house is pretty close to that line. More in the house that's next to that one. And so it was difficult to get enough room to, I added like a master bathroom kind of thing, you know?
Yeah, so I think that brings, makes it, makes it really clear, and I can show some of the other schematics that I've drawn, but I thought the real world examples were more important at this point. The shape of a lot can make a really big difference in what kind of configuration you can put on something. Like if this, if you could imagine this lot being wider and shorter, you, your driveway could be shorter because your parking may be. Sort of closer to the front lot line, and you have a bigger backyard. Like, there's a lot of other ways that things can be configured in the same. Approximate total lot square footage. And one, one example that I wanted to show is, is the next one. So if, oh, yeah.
So in this one. Going with the five thousand square feet for a single family. If, if this lot was to be redeveloped, it would go taller, but basically the same footprint for the house.
It could be, it could. And I mean, this, this owner could. Add a second story and just raise their own roof as it, as it is currently.
And that could become one home with two floors or conceivably.
Could be a duplex.
Theory, that could be an over-under duplex using that basically same footprint. They, they might need. You know, they, they, to, to fit the vehicles, they might, would want to have a few more feet here on the driveway, which would be coverage. You know, that would be a trade for you to all consider, but that's a way in which something like this, you know, let's say this had been a two-story. This is, you know, the history of our whole area is, you know, a, a home that might have been a single. At times becomes a duplex and then back to a single. That's what happened to the house I happen to live in.
Me too.
So, in our neighborhood, that's happened a lot. People have built up. Put a second story on a, on a one-story house. And that's been really successful for people. And you know Bob Tason, right, that, that kind of just, you know? He lives in our neighborhood, so he's done most of that work. And the other thing people have done is they have bought houses and basically raised them and maybe use the foundation. To build really pretty large homes, you know, and. Most of those houses are built on double lots, because there are some double lots in the neighborhood. But that's happened quite a bit, and there are also duplexes in the neighborhood too.
I think that's your segue right there.
I will say that in, so, as Paul mentioned, there are three in a row that are of a similar size. There are very few other lots that are this small. There's a good number of six thousands and seven thousands, but under six thousand, there's citywide only a handful. But this is, this is one of them that is, does have a single-family home on it.
Plus all Queen City Park.
Well, we're not talking about Queen City. Okay, so this is the next one that I wanted to bring up, and it brings up what I was talking about a little bit. This is two examples. The top one is a property that at some point it looks to me like was subdivided front and back. Was probably laid out as one big rectangle and then was drawn with that squiggly line in the middle. That front lot is what I marked out. It's a total lot size of fifty-five, forty-five. With a sixteen hundred square foot footprint of the front home, that is a single fam, a single level home. The, the setback, again, approximated, is about nine, nine feet. So that's much lower than, than the previous one that was closer to twenty. But if you can see from the, from the picture down below, I mean, they put a bunch of bushes in, in that particular piece of setback. But it's, it doesn't, to me, this is my own, just my own opinion, it doesn't feel like it's overly crowding the street. It doesn't, especially because it's. A smaller home, it's not sort of looming over the street. It's not really a negative, in my opinion, that it's that close. The side is.
Where are you going?
I was just going to the next one.
I'm not done with the first one. The building coverage is twenty-nine percent, the lot coverage is sixty-one percent, so that's a little lower on the building, a little higher on the lot, on the lot coverage. But that is because it appears to me like the parking for the second home is on the first home's property. So if you can see down below in the picture, they have kind of an angle parking situation going on. And then there's another little car that you can see kind of maybe on gravel or grass at the top of that second lot. So the parking for the back lot is clearly on the front.
Is this in the Chamberlain neighborhood?
This is also in Eastwoods.
Oh, okay.
This is a, yeah, it's on Meadow. It's a few, few blocks east and a block and a half or so south of the previous. So this is a good, to me, it was a good example of an existing sort of front-back subdivision, like we've been talking about being able to do in other places. And what, one option of what that could look like. I will say I have no idea about the ownership of this. I have no idea about who is allowed to use what part of the backyard or any kind of, you know. Arrangements that they may have. But it is just an example of about a five thousand square foot lot that was created from subdividing what looks like about an eleven thousand square foot total.
That house that you've got in dark blue, I think, is for sale right now, I mean, four hundred and thirty thousand.
Okay, so would, I, I have a question about frontage here.
Yeah.
And, you know, I should know this, but would we be allowed to do that, this today, even though the back house doesn't. Touch the front? Like, would there be a right of way through there or?
So no, not today, because about eight or nine years ago, the planning commission. Made a change in the regulations whereby you required a minimum of fifty-foot lot frontage. So prior to that, it was allowed, but that was, that was changed, so today that would not be allowed. And. It used to also be that a planned unit of development could be on a small lot, which would have been another way to get at it, but. At that same time, eight or nine years ago, the commission said pooties are not allowed in this district and less than two acres. So this would, these amendments would sort of bring back the ability to do that. Similar to some of the other things you've been talking about of the setbacks from the seventies that were changed.
So in the draft, would you be allowed to do this, assuming there's a legal way to get in there? Do we have a mechanism? Are we changing something to be able to create like a driveway?
So the state law minimum is that you have to, any parcel that is not. That, that is not directly fronting on a street or a public water needs to hat, needs to demonstrate that they've got a twenty-foot wide. Right of access. So if we eliminated the fifty-foot minimum, it would revert to the state law minimum. Right of access doesn't necessarily mean ownership. It could be across somebody else's lot, which is very likely what this scenario is here.
Yep.
But in creating that lot, that's something that under state law, they would have to demonstrate to the DRB. Which is also repeated in our regulations, but would be, that's, that's how that would be addressed.
Any more questions about this guy? So, we are now moving to a duplex. I am again in Eastwoods. I swear, I looked at other parts of the city, but honestly, the best examples of some of these smaller lots and duplexes and. Nice, small homes happen to be in, on small lots, happen to be in Eastwoods. This one's a little bit interesting. I really liked this home, so that's partially why I included it. It is a duplex, and I think Paul's now zooming into it. There are two front doors. But other than that, you, it really does, looks no different than a different craftsman-style home. So in this case, so the lot is actually eighty-eight hundred square feet, but it is quite deep, and I'll talk about that in a second. Currently, the building, so including a five hundred, oh, no!
Keep going.
Including. Including a five hundred or so square foot back garage, kind of carriage house style garage and a long driveway. The buildings are about twenty-six, twenty-six ninety, about thirty percent of the lot. Lot coverage is one, the, the additional lot coverage is one long driveway. Which is actually gravel. As you can see, it's a sort of a double-track gravel driveway that goes back to that carriage house. That adds, it only adds about a thousand square feet, even though it is quite long, because it's fairly narrow. I don't know how functional this is for a duplex. They must figure it out somehow, but there's no way to kind of turn around behind the home. You kind of have to back all the way in and all the way out. That brings a lot coverage total to forty-one percent. So that's on the lower side. But I just wanted to draw, just for fun, a theoretical lot on this lot. So you can see the dark blue dotted line. Theoretically, you could move that back garage up into that dotted line area. And that would reduce your lot coverage because the driveway would be shorter, keeping exactly the same building coverage. That would be about a six thousand square foot lot, it'd be fifty-nine, seventy-seven, fifty-nine, seventy-eight. And fit those buildings at forty-five percent building coverage and fifty-six percent lot coverage. Again, this is a, a single-family home, or not saying, it's a duplex, but it's a, a single level with that second level having the peaked roof. I've also in the aerial pretty obviously included that front porch. So that would not be counted exactly the same. So those numbers would be a little bit lower, but I was just interested to see this nice-looking duplex. On what kind of lot would you be able to fit it on? And to me, just a non-architect, non-civil engineer. You could fit it on about a six thousand square foot lot.
If the driveway is gravel, why is it impervious?
Because gravel is considered impervious.
Anywhere that you consistently drive or park is considered impervious for state standards and for our zoning.
Then I better go back to my board and tell them not to rip up the asphalt.
Yeah, it's interesting, because this is a very, this is a very config, similar configuration to a house I owned when I lived in Pennsylvania. But the lot was like two-thirds the size of that lot. I mean, it was a small lot. The advantage was, it was a sloped lot and I could, you know, the garage was below, you know, it was in. The basement level. You just kind of drove right in.
Yep.
And, and into the basement, and that was a tiny lot.
Yeah.
But it worked. I mean, it had a little bit more side yard to it.
Yeah, so in.
Never felt like it wasn't enough, you know?
Right.
And a couple of big trees, and I'm like, okay, this is, it works.
Mm-hmm. So a couple of things to point out on, on this. It was, it was built in the sort of nineteen forties, maybe early nineteen fifties, so it's just. When I, it's, there are a lot of neighborhoods in, in places like Philadelphia and Pittsburgh that are of that same age.
Twenties, actually.
Yeah, so in those few sort of between war and post-war decades. The front setback is about thirteen feet here, and the two sides are both about fourteen. But as you can see, on the one side, the parcel, well, the parcel lines may not be correct because the home next to this home is actually right on that parcel line. So either that next home is, has almost no setback, or the parcel line is shifted a little bit. So that side setback to the east may be, you know, ten, five to ten feet instead of that fourteen.
One of the things, also, we, we had on-street parking.
Yeah.
And, you know, there's, I don't know how much of South Burlington allows on-street parking.
So there's a winter parking ban, and that's the, there's a lot of South Burlington allows on, on-street parking for sort of the spring, summer, fall months. But it does not allow parking in the winter, so that's.
Have some off-street place enough to.
Right.
Put two cars for a duplex.
Right, or, or like what Burlington has is when they have their, their, they don't have a, a full seasonal parking ban. They have, you know, certain days that the lights flash, but they have city parking lots that you can park in for free on those days. That's something that South Burlington does not currently have. So those are just a few more considerations. That's something that South Burlington does not currently have, so those are just a few more considerations.
We have lots of parking.
I don't, I, I don't think anybody uses the gravel driveway, I've never seen anybody use it. And the people who live there always park in the street.
Okay. Yeah, this is right on Proctor Avenue.
Yeah, yeah, and there's a, a lot of on-street parking in our neighborhood to begin with, I mean, the parking ban is sort of. Cultural imperialism or something, you know, because parking on the street is the thing and. People park in the street in the wintertime anyway, uh, and, um. You know, it's kind of a problem for people, cause there's not a lot of garages, there's not a lot of, uh, ways to get off the street. And a lot of houses. Yeah, are you sure that, that one's on Proctor?
Yeah, it's nine Proctor Avenue.
A way down in practice.
Yeah, it's, it's the first, it's actually the first home after the, so if you look at that, the street view, just to the.
Maybe they do, there's, the, the, there's another one up in Hadley that looks a lot like that.
Yeah, so if you look at that, the street view picture, to the right of there is that first property, it's a commercial property that fronts on Shelburne Street.
Yep.
So just a question, I mean, are we gonna, cause right now, the current development standards, the streets, uh, residential streets are quite narrow. And I'm not even sure if they really allow for parking, do they?
Um, do, do you mean existing streets or new streets? So new streets, we do have, um, design, we, we have a palette of street types.
Right.
Most of which require one side parking.
One side.
There is, um, one street type that is available to the DRB to consider under certain limited circumstances. Called a neighborhood street narrow, um, for really sort of short little streets where you don't necessarily want. A wa, a lot of pavement width, um, recent examples of that are off, um. Kennedy Drive, uh, Laurentide and Split Rock, they're sort of intended, they only serve two or three homes.
I remember that.
Right.
Yeah, cause we talked about, you know, being able to have the sidewalk, uh, at the same level.
Right.
Just in case.
Just in case, and because fire needs twenty feet, and so this was a way of, they use a change in materials. Um, to integrate the sidewalk into the twenty feet, so you don't have a huge amount of infrastructure for serving, I think it's seven homes there or something.
Yeah, I don't know, Blake and Ted had that discussed.
Also, did you look at anything in Mayfair Park?
The lots tend to be larger in Mayfair Park, so, um, I didn't draw it on any of these, cause they were farther apart, farther away from these. The small minimums that we're looking at.
Do, well, I guess I have a question about this, um, you know, and the, and, you know. There's a lot of houses that look very similar to this in that town I grew up in, but they're served by an alley in the back.
Yep.
And I know that that's something that our regulations allow for, and you wouldn't need that long driveway necessarily, like the. The access would be, you know, from like a shared alley from the back, like, do you think that would work for these? Or is that like something we're not encouraging?
Can I jump into that? I think that the scenario that is most likely where that takes place is where somebody is. Building a larger neighborhood as opposed to an infill on site by site. In those instances, that's either the traditional neighborhood or the traditional neighborhood infill, which can be four acres-ish. In which case, yes, absolutely, that is invited and encouraged. I think in this case, we're much more likely to be seeing lot by lot, and it's less likely to see a. Alley being created, um.
Yeah, across.
I guess for infill, but these minimum lot sizes are gonna apply even to a new.
Yep.
Street or neighborhood, right?
Yep.
These are, I know where.
Yes, unless you get to the point where it's, let's say, a mandatory traditional neighborhood type. And then those ones which are similar to these, but have some different criteria, wo- would kick in, and then the street types kick in about the on-street parking and all that kind of thing. But yeah.
Yeah, and the only thing that's not quite, that an alley is, um, there are a handful of lots that are on corners. That happen to be a lot narrower on one street than on the other, um, like when Paul mentioned, Paul mentioned that there are three in a row of those small lots. The home on the corner lot faces one street. And you could have sort of the access from the other and have like a little short driveway that would effectively be on that back of the long side. Um, so there's a handful of those that you could sort of develop the back, back of the lot. Even though it's sort of the side of the lot from the other direction.
She actually built up in that house.
Oh, okay.
Put a, um, mother-in-law apartment.
Yeah.
Upstairs.
Yeah. Okay.
Hmm.
So we're, we're focused on small lots. The, as, as close to the minimum as we, as you can find.
That's the, um, what I'm showing you as visual, visualization, because deciding about those small lots is. Um, or is, if, if the sort of visual impact of putting a home on a lot that size is something that the commission is. On board with or not, or if you want it to be bigger, smaller, whatever it might be, um.
No, my, my question would be on bigger lots.
Yep.
Ten thousand square feet or eight, nine, ten, twenty. The, the combination of building and impervious of fifty percent.
Mm-hmm.
On a large lot, you could have, um, a home with a deck with a footprint of. Five thousand square feet. In theory, at twenty percent, uh, so now we're getting into McMansions. Um, and I wonder if we should. There should be maybe a sliding scale. You know, at five thousand and six thousand square feet, you, it, it's, it's thirty and, um. Thirty percent or, or fifty percent combined, and as you go up, you reduce that. Um, we also had, uh, one of our. Previous colleagues had suggested that, uh, we could avoid that problem with, um, maximum building footprint. Uh, maybe we should revisit that, I think the idea was that if, if somebody had the space. And wanted to build, uh, a home that has a bigger footprint than would be permitted. Uh, they could, they could use TDRs to acquire the additional. Size, building size.
So max.
It may be an unintended consequence of fixing of the, of the combined fifty percent, that we could get some very, very big. Homes, which is not desirable.
Yeah, so maximum building footprint is something that Burlington is working on with their neighborhood code.
No longer working on adopted last night.
Oh, there we go, breaking news, adopted last night, Burlington's adopted their neighborhood code. Um, so they are using maximum building footprint. And not have, and correct me if this is incorrect, not having a minimum lot size. In most, if not all, places, so what it does is you're, it incentivizes people to have smaller lots. Cause you can't have something to, you can't have a big building on a big lot, but you can have two. Buildings at the maximum footprint on two smaller lots.
Yeah.
Partially, so it's, it's along the same lines.
We could have.
Yeah.
Minimum lot size and maximum footprint.
Yes.
To avoid this.
Right, so we have something similar to it in the, in the maximum lot building. Coverage, but you could choose to make it a maximum building footprint, Burlington went with, I think you said eighteen hundred?
Hundred?
For the zoning districts that are most analogous to the ones we're talking about here, the sort of new north end. Area, which is somewhat analogous to, made their park, Eastwoods Orchards.
And the south.
Country Club Estates, yeah, I was just.
Yeah. Um.
So it's something we should really look at, um.
Well, right, cause, cause there, cause there's nothing to say that, you know, if you have a ten thousand square foot lot, that you could still cover fifty percent of it. And have a, quite a large house, you know, even at thirty percent.
Or large building regardless of the number of units in it, right?
Right, right. Well.
Yeah, you could.
I don't know, I mean, in some ways, you know, I hear from people all the time, oh, there's not enough housing that's appropriate for seniors, i.e. one level.
Hmm.
And so that kind of works against that idea, you know, it's like, you'd like to be able to build, have one level and not have an elevator. If somebody has a big enough lot.
Yeah, I think it is something to, we, we had raised at a previous meeting, the. Different towns and cities do this differently, but we separate building coverage and lot coverage as two different numbers. And the building coverage is a subset number of the lot coverage number, we had discussed whether that should be simplified to lot coverage. Um, but that would play directly into what you're saying, is you could have a very large building and no driveway or something. Like you could play those two things off, so it adds flexibility, but it does add to the size of a total building, so you could do something like. Well, first of all, you could shrink both of those numbers, lot coverage and building coverage, you could shrink. Lot coverage, if you're concerned about impervious and bring it closer to the building coverage number, like maybe it's thirty and forty or, or. Forty and fifty or whatever it is, sorry, in that range, um, so there's other things that you can tweak.
You could shrink it on larger lots, but you wouldn't want to shrink it on a five thousand square foot.
That's the tricky.
That's what I was gonna say, is I think what you're learning here, if you generally like this, if you shrink the numbers on these size lots.
Right.
You're prohibiting from this, from existing.
No, I'm not thinking about that, uh, larger lots are, would be the ones where we would try to shrink it.
Well, and even, even a large lot, you know, if somebody builds a large house on a lot. Nothing to say that somebody can't convert that to, you know, to two units later on, because they're not gonna. If you don't, if you really have, you have that many people in a house and you, you need a big house, I don't think you should prevent somebody from building it, but. You can also not stop, you know, also.
I'm, I'm not suggesting we should prevent them, they have the option to buy TDRs and build whatever they want.
But that's a, that's a hassle and it's extra money. I mean.
Regulation is always a hassle.
Really wanna make people do things that don't make sense, you know, in their own special situation, cause I mean. That, yeah, there are some large houses, but, you know, I don't, I don't think, I don't think you can tell somebody, it's like. This is how big a house you can build, you know, it doesn't, it seems, it seems kind of strange.
If, if, if there's a maximum footprint already in our neighboring town. I don't think people feel they're being forced to do something.
I don't know, I just don't think it's how we should legislate.
I think, um, I think one of the points, like, I grew up in a big house, but it was cut in two. So like my grandparents lived in half and the six of us lived in the other half and like, you know.
Look, I'm looking at a big house from twenty eight acres.
Yeah, so, I, I don't know, I think it's a good point, um, Paul?
Well, I, that was my question, is can we limit the size of houses that are built in South Burlington? Can we actually do that? We say no house can be larger than three thousand square feet.
Why would you do that?
Because people should be living in smaller houses for reasons of, um, both, uh. The economy and the climate, and the, uh, the climate crisis.
What if, what if they've adopted ten children? You know, it's like, I don't know, you're sort of getting involved in people's lives in ways that I don't think you really belong there.
Well, maybe, but, I mean. Uh, my understanding in Europe is the houses are all much smaller than the houses states.
Very tall, some of them are very tall.
Well.
I mean, a house that was like eighteen feet wide but five stories tall, that was all one house.
Yeah.
Lot of rooms. Lot of stairs.
So what did Burlington do that is gonna limit the size of houses?
They said a maximum building footprint.
Maximum building footprint, and what is the maximum building footprint?
Eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred?
Mm-hmm.
But you said that was only on.
From eighteen hundred, but you can't build out from eighteen hundred.
Yes.
And you can build up how high from eighteen hundred, as much as you want?
That depends on the district, I'm not sure.
Eighteen hundred depends on districts too.
The eighteen hundred depends on districts, the height depends on just. But, yeah.
Uh, I'm not this, this, just, do we go that low as eighteen hundred, but, you know, two and a half thousand square feet or. Three.
Well, if you have it at, if you have it at, if you have a ten thousand square foot lot, thirty percent is three. Um.
Yep.
I think, I am not an economist, but I feel like there's sort of economic breakpoints where you won't, like, if you look around South Burlington, there's. There are very few homes that have footprints that are larger than that anyway, on any size lot. Um, so the history of, of building is, is not to have sort of ten thousand square foot homes. Um, obviously that can change in the future, but it's, it's not something that we've necessarily seen. Um, even homes that are maybe five thousand square feet total, the footprint is only twenty five hundred. Um, and as, as Donna said, you know, something, there's a lot of places like Montpelier comes to mind, St. Albans comes to mind. That large Victorians that were five, six thousand square feet have been cut up now into three or four units, um, so.
Yeah, well, we, we've seen it on Spear Street in the R one, it's a function of zoning to some extent, but. They had the space, so they built these enormous, huge houses.
Right, but I, I guess my point is in the total number of homes in South Burlington, there, that's very few. It's in the, it's less than, I don't know, forty, out of, I don't know how many homes there are, should, do you know? Houses in South Burlington? Housing units in South Burlington?
Housing units, about ninety five hundred.
Ninety five hundred?
But forty percent of those are in multifamily, or fifty percent of those are in multifamily housing, so.
Yeah, so if you call it four thousand single-family homes, um, maybe one percent are that sort of super large. Sub, subset.
I guess my point was just that if we keep, everyone had built affordable housing, we should build smaller.
Well, I think that's what.
And, and, and just, just to speak to that point, uh, I think that a lot of the intent of Act forty seven that is the driver here. Is to hit exactly that, Paul, and so, um, our. Current regulations, other than the fact that it's been superseded by Act forty seven. Um, basically punishes you for doing a smaller house, because you're allowed to build four units an acre. If you choose to build four one thousand square foot homes or four five thousand square foot homes. You can still only do, five thousand's a big number, but you can still only do four, so as a builder. Of course, you're gonna sell the bigger one, just like, you know, the car companies sell the bigger cars, cause you get more profit on them. I think switching to the lot size based one will encourage folks to say, oh, look at that, I could do. You know, some five, six thousand square foot lots, and instead of knowing that I'm capped at only four homes, I can put. Seven or eight here, so, you know, an example I think of is right around the corner from here, if you go out to, um. Heinsburg Road, right where St. John Vianio's, there was an empty lot, um, on the corner of, I think it's Barrett. And it's built with a duplex, and if you look at the duplex, it is way undersized for the lot, it should have, it should have been two lots with at least. Something else on it, because there's just a big chunk of grass that's sitting there, but it was half an acre, and two homes are allowed on half an acre. So that's, they did everything that they were allowed to do, they built something medium sized and it looks, it's, it's an underuse of the property. Given everything else around it, but that's what our current regulations are sort of incentivizing frankly, is bigger homes, so. I think a big step in what Act forty seven in the conversation you're having will be achieving that goal of more smaller homes. Cause you're not disincentivized from doing them.
Yeah, and I think, I think also, energy codes and everything being what it, what it is. The most economical way to build an affordable house is to share walls, so townhouses or, you know, or. Or even a quadplex or something like that is the way you build an affordable home. I mean, building small individual homes is just not happening, um, because it's, there's so much more material involved. And so much more exposed area and it's just an affordable way to build, um, and unless you're building it yourself.
And I think, you know. Once the regulations are in place, it might happen more, though, you know, because people, I think there are a lot of people that like. You know, likes the idea of a standalone home, um, so I think that there is, there is a market for it. And if we change the regulations to allow for it, I think we'll see more, like, like Paul was saying, like, right now. Really doesn't make sense with the way our, our zoning's written.
Right, it makes sense in, in these lot situations to have small individual. You know, individual. Homes. Well, separate, separate units, single, you can do single family, you don't have to, but you can. And you're right, that, that is an attractive thing to a lot of people.
Yep.
Oh, so just super.
Maximum lot, uh, maximum building footprint would encourage people to not build.
Just a, a really quick, um, just a data set that I happen to have on my, in my email for other reasons. Just a, a really quick, um, just a data set that I happen to have on my, in my email for other reasons. I believe that there are only twenty-eight homes in South Burlington that are over five thousand square feet. So just, just to, for the scale of what we're talking about, there's, there's twenty-eight.
So we've got a lot of activity in the audience, apparently.
They're talking about their five thousand square.
Okay, all you mega giant homeowners, um, uh, you wanna go ahead? Yeah.
Ryan Doyle, um, I, I'm really happy to see these changes that um, move toward the ability for some lots to create and fill. There is definitely a demand for detached, single family homes. But I, I don't really hear anything that is directly challenges, um, what Mike is saying, and I I really agree with what Mike is saying here. Um, there are a lot of places in the city that aren't um, that are gonna be part of this new district that are accessible to water and sewer, that currently have very large lot sizes and we know that the neighborhoods really aren't going to allow tiny lots to come out of that. Um, and so the result will be larger lots and the possibility for very large, single family homes. And so I do think that we get to that point where there will be sections specifically in the southeast quadrant where you'll have large lots, large homes, lots of impervious surface due to longer driveways. And what Michael is saying about creating either some type of scale, um, that's, um, so that your percentage of lot coverage decreases as the size of your lot goes up, or having some kind of maximum where your footprint, not the total square footage of your home, because you can go up stories, but that footprint of impervious surface has a maximum size um, and can be exchanged for TDRs or possibly exchanged for, um, other impervious surface space. So, uh, maybe a, another piece that could fit into what Mike is saying is having greater limits on the amount of automobile centric, impervious surface. So as you get into bigger lots, the amount of driveway and garage space without living space above it uh, might be kept at a smaller percentage, um, or something like that. The other thing, um, so anyway, I just wanna put that support for what Michael's saying, cause I do really see how that has value in making sure that, you know, the, the runoff we create from impervious surface, we want that to serve as many people as possible. Um, rather than having certain places to be able to just make so much more of it for a relatively few number of people. The other thing I have a question about is when we're calculating lot coverage, um, accessory dwelling structures are included in that. But am I correct in that tennis courts and in-ground pools do not count?
Uh, tennis courts count as impervious surface, just like a driveway would, or just like a patio would. I think an in-ground pool does.
It counts as impervious or.
So, I mean, they're definitely impervious, but I think the land development regulations state that when we're counting accessory, um, structures, which tennis courts and pools are listed as accessory structures, that it specifically exempts them from lot coverage, um, requirements.
Well, that seems like that should change.
Yeah. Actually, the original proposal for restricting footprint excluded garages.
Well, I think garages and those things should be counted as impervious, so. If they don't, then that's a, it's a mistake.
The whole stormwater issue is, is still a serious problem, you know, and and I know one neighborhood, neighborhood, it was a hilltop area that had been farmed and it got developed with lots of houses and lots of paving and, um, you know, beautiful homes, but all of a sudden, they, there was flooding issue. You know, the areas just downhill and downstream from there started getting some serious flooding. You know, and that's, I guess, the issue when you have individual lots like this, you know, and you start getting a lot of impervious surfaces. I mean, it's one of the reasons Chicago developed, I mean, probably one of the first cities in the United States to actively encourage green roofs, because, um, they couldn't handle the stormwater. And, uh, you know, so.
Uh, we'll hear from Vince.
Thank you. Very, very quickly, when you're calculating the, uh, the, the building footprint, suppose a person builds a house with a certain building footprint, and then according to Act forty-seven, they're allowed to put an ADU on it. How will that play in? Uh, because the ADU with nine hundred square feet, I think, can, uh, might exceed uh, what was originally planned.
So it would still be required to be, it's still part of the building coverage in the lot. You don't sort of get extra for doing an ADU instead of something else. So if the, if the limit is thirty or forty percent, then you would have to have that extra room, nine hundred square feet in your, in your remaining. You'd have to have been under that number to add the ADU.
Or, or the ADU is within the built.
Or the ADU is, is a converted basement or attic or, or upper floor of a garage or something else. Or a barn, an existing barn.
So I think it's, uh, sad that we're telling young people that, um, what we always thought of as the American dream, which is the single family home, that that's no longer available to them, that they need to live in townhouses or condos or apartments. And I think I would like to see us go in the direction of building small, uh, affordable net zero homes. I think that would be ideal for South Burlington to do that. And, um, I guess I would like to hear a little bit more about how our LDRs have encouraged building larger homes and what kind of changes we would need to make to encourage people to build smaller homes.
I guess I'd say, Paul, that, that what I was describing a few minutes ago is the biggest incentive that has existed for larger homes, because we have his for the last several decades, um, said four units an acre. So four units an acre, that's ten thousand square feet per lot. Um, if that lot happens to exist, then it A is a pretty big lot. Um, it's not, it's not necessarily big for South Burlington, but nationally, we have the largest average, single family house lot in the country of any state. So we're seeing here that there's five and six and, um, and that these are attractive areas. So that's one component. And then the fact that we have said maximum of four on an acre has led the economics of that are, you know, if I can only build four, then I'm gonna build four bigger ones. If you could build eight on, you know, my math is gonna be wrong here, but eight on five thousand square foot lots, then maybe you're gonna incentivize somebody to build eight of them. Um, instead of building four big ones, you might choose to do eight smaller ones, which is doubling the number of homes that exist and giving some opportunities to folks, just as you're describing.
So what is Act forty-seven telling us?
Act forty-seven is saying a few things. One is, um, you must allow at least five units an acre. So some towns, even in where you have water and sewer, so there's some towns in Vermont where even the middle of their villages, they're saying it's an acre for a single family home. So they're setting a bar that is close-ish to where we've been. They're also saying that any single family home can be a duplex under the same conditions. And then the third thing that they're saying is, um, under the, under the existing Act forty-seven is not necessarily for the same acreage, but any zoning district that allows for a single family home and is served by water and sewer must allow for a, up to a fourplex to exist. So an example of that, that we're gonna get to in just a minute, is, um, the Habitat for Humanity fourplex around the corner that was on the parcel of what used to be a single family home. Okay. Let's get back to where we were. Just give me a second here. Okay. Okay. We're talking about some fourplexes now, right?
Yes. Two different, two very different fourplexes, actually. Um, so this first one is not brand new. It is in the Chamberlain neighborhood. It is on a large lot. It's on a thirty-two thousand square foot lot. Um, and the buildings are, so including the brick building that's in the front, that you can see in the street view picture, um, is that twenty-six forty-six or twenty-six forty-seven building, and then it has a back building that I can't tell exactly what it is. It may be a garage or a maintenance shed or, or something similar, or a couple of garage spots. That is, so for a, a total of thirty-two forty-two building coverage, which is only ten percent of the actual lot here, it's, as I said, a large lot. Um, but it also has kind of a large driveway at an angle to the street, um, so it has more impervious than is necessary for that building. Um, but the lot coverage is twenty-nine percent, including that six thousand square feet of driveway. Um, from the GIS aerial photo and from Google Maps, it looks like people drive into that driveway and then park straight. Um, sort of at that, that end. So there's about, there's four or five parking spots that are straight there. So it doesn't necessarily need to be as long as it is. So there's other things we can talk about here. It also has kind of a little trash area and a turnaround, other stuff. I made a theor- yeah.
Before you go to theoretical, just a quick note that this entire area, this parcel, just to sort of give the context of our current regulations before Act forty-seven, we would not allow this building today.
Correct.
Because it's only thirty-two thousand square feet.
Not forty.
So even with this huge amount of green space back here, our current zoning absent Act forty-seven would only allow this to be a threeplex. So just to sort of give the scale of, this is showing that we're really not right sizing, cause this is even if you don't, before you get there's plenty of room on this property. Um, so.
Yeah, and this is, this is what we're talking about when we were at a few meetings ago, talking about scaling the lots to building type. This is exactly the example of that, of, you know, they, for a fourplex, you needed four times as much as a single family home. Um, when a fourplex takes up a lot less space, especially a, a two level fourplex like this. Um, so my theoretical lot is kind of a funny shape, cause I was trying to cut it out. Um, is sixteen thousand square feet, so about half, um, making the buildings twenty percent and the lot coverage fifty-seven percent. Uh, as I said, the driveway is bigger than it needs to be, so that number, that lot coverage number could be lower, even if you just straightened it out. The driveway, so instead of being at that angle.
What methodology did you use to come to the theoretical?
I drew it. I just took the buildings that were there and I, and I said, if you, if you made a tighter lot that would still fit exactly this configuration, what would it be? Um, so it is no sort of best design practices, nothing. It's just cookie cutter. If you straightened out the driveway, you would have less. Also, that front setback is thirty-five, almost thirty-six feet. That is quite large and it's just a big open lawn that I'm sure nobody uses for anything. Um, so you could move, again, with a theoretical lot, you could move the all, the whole chunk, building driveway, back building forward and cut off a whole nother section of the back. So just showing that even with an inefficient design, being on maybe twelve thousand square feet, could even work for a fourplex.
So, so just to relate this back to the table, so we're, we're knowing what we're comparing to, would this be?
This would be a small multi.
So small multi on the table currently shows a seven thousand minimum lot size. And the lot coverage of sixty, which is pretty similar to what we're seeing here.
Yeah, so I would say for, for that, like this, a seven thousand square foot lot that fit a fourplex would be close to a unicorn, like it'd be, it'd have to be exactly the right sort of shape to be able to fit things. You would probably have to be relying somewhat on street parking and not having this long sort of driveway and pavement area behind the building. Um, as you can see, there's also a big gap between the building and the pavement of, of probably about ten feet. There's a lot of things in this, in this drawing that you could sort of tighten up.
Well, I guess I'd also add that, you know, the front building there is twenty-five hundred square feet. Floor, so that's.
Yeah, that's five thousand square feet.
That's, so that's per unit thirteen hundred square feet. Although there are a lot of apartments that exist in a fourplex that are half that size or less. So imagine that this same building could theoretically be half that size and not have this big giant utility shed out back. There, there's other ways that it could become a fourplex. I think in the next example, and I'm just gonna push this along a little bit, cause it's already eight-ten, there's another one that contrasts to this a little bit. Is it okay if we, if we keep going?
So the next one is the one that Paul mentioned before. It's off of Heinsberg Road, well, it's on Heinsberg Road. Um, it, it was developed by Habitat for Humanity. It's kind of a, um, four-square style of quadplex, I believe. Um, and so it's sort of like a, like a cubic townhouse in a way. This, the, the impervious surface on this one especially was a real guess, because the um, GIS map that we have was the construction site. Um, it had the building, but the back part of the lot was all construction site, so I can't say how accurate these, the impervious on the back actually is. Um, also on the front, as you can see in the picture, it is about a twenty-foot setback, but they have used it for, as the effectively backyards of those front units. Because those front units don't go all the way through the building, they only go halfway through the building, more or less. Um, so those, that's their private space.
So it's front yard.
It's the, yeah.
Enclosed front.
Enclosed front yard. It's their outdoor space for those front two units. Um, so that's partially why it's a bit set back a bit from the road, um, compared to some of the single family homes that we were looking at before. Um, so for this, the total lot is sixteen thousand square feet, so about the size of the theoretical one from the other page. The building is thirty-two eighty-one, so twenty percent in the lot, total is about fifty-nine percent. But again, that impervious, especially in the back, may be larger than is actually used as parking now. Um, because it's a bunch of construction materials and things in the image.
So these are two back-to-back.
Right, so two face the street and two face the parking lot essentially. So everybody has two stories.
Yes. Yes. So again, on the larger side for, it's, I mean, a, a really nice size for, for a, a family.
Right, and I think what's interesting about this one is this is a pretty new build. This was only like two years ago. So opposed to some of the other examples that are showing something from the forties and fifties.
Or the eighties.
This is current.
What, was this brand new construction?
Yes. Brand new construction. If, actually, if you zoom into Google Maps, the house disappears at a certain level, because one level of the image is, the house is there and the next level it's not. So if you zoom in far enough, it disappears, which is why it's a little grainier than the others, cause I couldn't zoom in as far.
Okay, do we have another image?
Yes, we do.
Just one moment. Okay. Um, I will say, just as a, as a side note, when we were going through this, we've talked about the missing middle housing of, you know, there's not been a lot of housing built that's more than a duplex. Other than townhomes, more than a duplex and less than thirty unit building. Evidence, there's not a lot of them that we found.
There are very few.
Other than old ones, and that's especially in our community, even in adjacent communities, so.
Something like a sixplex or an eightplex, those are very hard to find in South Burlington.
There are some.
There are some, but you have more like fours and twelves. So this one is actually in Burlington, um, because it's an example of, of something that it's, it's a good example that I wanted to show. This building is on, um, the corner of Lyman Avenue and Shelburne Street. If you've driven up Shelburne Road, Shelburne Street towards Burlington, it's on the left, um, more or less across from Myers, um, Bagels new location. It is actually a fifty-seven hundred square foot footprint. But it is ten or eleven units, and we're guessing at that by guess, by looking at the number of gas meters on the outside. So it's, it's depending on the grainy So it's, it's depending on the grainy bit of the units, it's, it's ten or eleven. Um, it is.
Thousand square foot lot.
It's an eighteen thousand square foot lot and a twelve thousand square foot, um, impervious coverage, including sort of those front, those, a few front, um, walkways. The back in that sort of notch-out area is actually, there's an accessibility ramp. Um, so that takes up a good amount of that space, there's also sort of a patio and some planters. So it's not exactly the same, it's just asphalt. There is also some parking underneath, um, so that's the view from Shelburne Street. And then if you look at the view from the Lyman Avenue side, there's some parking underneath that back part of the building and then to the back. But if you can see through where there's underneath the building parking, there is sort of outdoor patio that is, it is impervious, but it's sort of more site amenity than parking. Um, so even, yeah. Ten or eleven. Yeah. Um, do you, but, just go, oh, the numbers are there. So it's, it's thirty-one percent building coverage and sixty-six percent lot coverage.
Some other examples, and I don't think that we recorded the other ones, but some other examples that we looked at that we didn't, um, put in here, but you could think about in our community are, um, along Kennedy Drive, just north of, sorry, along Heinsburg Road, just north of Hays. There was a senior housing complex. On Heinsburg Road, south of Kennedy, north of Hays. Uh, there's a senior housing and in front of it, there were three, um, six plexes built. Um, and then across the street from that, there's a three and a four that were built. They were hard to work out the math because they share the parking with larger ones. South Village also has some eight plexes and ten plexes on relatively small areas that, um, we wanted to fly for you, but we didn't, we wanted to sort of keep a scale of what you're looking at. They're a little bit bigger because they have sort of a long driveway around. Um, and what's next?
Great. Um, I guess I wanna bring this back to our table, which is what we're attempting to work on. Um, the, I'm thinking about the small multi and the medium, I think medium, would this be medium, ten?
This would be a low. This one would actually, uh, no, this would be a medium, you're right.
Um, so the small multi, the fourplex and the medium, this ten-ish plex have much smaller minimum lot sizes than the examples, and I guess I just wanna um, pose the question, if we feel like, you know, to some of Paul and Michael's points, do we wanna kind of potentially allow a smaller lot size, knowing that someone might need to be creative about how they've configure things? Um, or do we feel like these examples are kind of saying, no, it's too small, it's not gonna work? Like, I'm therefore gonna raise these numbers. Cause we have seven thousand and nine thousand, which is, you know, significantly smaller than the examples, so.
Yeah, they're smaller than the examples, I think a couple of things have already been raised. Um, the unit sizes could be smaller than in some of these, like, uh, uh, the Heinsburg Road fourplex could be, again, half the size, it'd be small, but it could be half the size of what it currently is. Um, so just because we can't slice and slice the regulations up into every possible permutation of, of variables, it's kind of, you know, things may not exactly fit everything. Um, so that's where we're putting, uh, in, my professional opinion is dropping the minimum lot size down a little bit allows for, as I said, there's a lot of influence on the shape of the lot. And, um, I can also circulate some rough, um, schematics that I put together that are not real examples that are just, you know, if the shape is, if it's nine thousand square feet, but it's this shape, it's a completely different thing than if it's a square or if it's an L shape or if it's something else. Um, so I think dropping the minimum lot size allows for more flexibility, um, especially for strangely shaped lots or info lots that might need to be strangely shaped. Um, and also allow for some variability in how the buildings are set up.
But the, the examples you've given, so part of the smallest, there's nothing under fifty-five hundred square feet uh, that you've shown us, so.
Correct.
The opposite question is, five thousand too small? As a minimum?
I didn't, I didn't see.
Five thousand would be the minimum for the single and twos, but not for the multiplexes.
It seemed like that worked reasonably well, they found a few examples where it fit. So five thousand seems like things fit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, uh, I guess I'm just thinking, do we feel like the seven thousand and nine thousand for the small, medium, multi is reasonable? And maybe a challenge for people to build smaller? Or at least allows people to build smaller? Fran?
So, uh, um, there's a house off of Van Strickland by the Brook on a side street that was totally torn apart. What, how many units are going in there, do you know, Paul?
Can you s- say again which property?
Of Van Strickland Road.
Yep.
It's a little cul-de-sac. Yep, there's a house right there on the corner that they ripped the hole inside out. How many units are going in there? Just one? Oh. But that's a smaller lot, but that could put like four or five.
Right, I mean, I think, you know, part of the way to conceive of this would be, imagine if a three-story house like that one or one of the ones on Spear Street were to become three flats. Now, you'd need the parking for that. Um, I did not give the example of my neighbor where, uh, my neighboring property is a uh, triplex with three two-bedroom units on a two-thousand square foot lot. But they only have one parking space total, which is not, which is why we didn't show this example, but i- it exists, it's just.
Yeah.
Not necessarily the right.
Jessica, were you, were you looking at small multi and medium multi as seven thousand and nine thousand being perhaps too large?
No, uh, not as too large, um. I'm wondering if they're too small, we haven't, we didn't visualize. I'm okay with them, I just feel like to complete the conversation, we should just say out loud if you think it's the right size. Or you wanna make a change, that's what I'm trying to get at.
I mean, you know, you've got small multis, some side-by-side would obviously take up more space than one on double the L. And, uh, trying to think of an example, there's, actually, there is an example that's part of He- um, Heatherfield. Uh, just behind the church and there are six or seven side-by-side.
To like add townhouse.
And they're on very, a very small amount of land, uh, I'm, I'd have to measure.
So, Michael, to that point, the one that we didn't look at right now is, is the form of the townhouse, where it's side-by-side. So I'm just gonna quickly, because you brought it up, um, I have to do a new share. Um, just quickly show a, a couple of examples of that. Hopefully, so, uh, this is Market Street, East End of Market Street. Um, uh, these are the triplexes that are there. So here, this triplex is on seventy-two hundred square feet, now it's triplex one, two, three. It could be arranged differently. Um, this one that has the shared driveway, um, that accesses is a little, is a little bit bigger. Um, we looked at a couple of other ones, just so that you've got context. Um, I went to my hometown for one. Come on.
This makes me feel better about the numbers, because small multi seven thousand, there's three on seven thousand.
Um, this is an example, oops.
And we were, the number for townhouse that we put in was twenty-five hundred, um, so the, even the middle guy here is, it's a little bit lower than that, but it's right in that ballpark.
But how do you deal with the lot coverage? Cause that's, that looks like, like nine percent or, I mean, almost the entire lot was covered with parking and pavement. So that's, that's, that seems to be the one place where, you know, we were butting up against the limit on almost every case was on the impervious coverage.
So I think you, you're hitting an element had there, what we had talked about was, if you're comfortable, if, if you, if the lot sizes are correct, the thing that you might need to adjust in order to make this work is how far back the front setback is. Because if you're saying, say, twenty-five feet, that's twenty-five feet where you can't put the building and that essentially has to be, um, you know, you're, you're eating away a big chunk of the lot.
Well, and assuming that you can't, you know, that you're gonna have parking and driveway, you're increasing.
Right, you have to have a driveway through that whole thing.
Have a driveway through that.
Um, here was an example, this is the Angus Rail Yards neighborhood in Montreal, um, built in the nineties and early two thousands. Uh, these are all, uh, triplexes and fourplexes. Um, so this is an example, again, a triplex, you can see they've got little backyards there, that's a swimming pool right there, sixty-eight hundred. Um, and the way that they manage the parking here is they actually dip down in between them and then the parking is underground for each of those. So this is sort of the small end of what you would potentially achieve. Um, for that form of triplex, one, two, three.
Do you wanna show the picture of the front?
Yeah.
Well, could you go back to the, the illustration that I have of the, of the houses at the end?
Sure, from above. Yes, just.
Hey, my girl. But in, in Angus Yards.
Yep, so there's almost, it's almost a hundred percent.
End, is there?
So in this case, there's, there's some, um, there's some pervious space over here and then it's just out of the picture, but for these ones, their stormwater is actually over to the right, there's a a, sorry, to the left, there's, there's a stormwater pond just off the corner here. Um, because they were more than a, um, half acre of impervious total, so they had to treat stormwater, but you're right. These are showing pretty high lot coverage percentages. This is built in Form-based code, the Form-based code does not limit up, um, your lot coverage.
Um, okay, so I guess the question, so I'm hearing maybe lot coverage may or may not be right in the table, except the, well, the question is, are the
are the lots that back up to those?
Start from now, but.
Units having any.
Not any more than.
Okay, um, this, so it feels like we've talked about this quite a bit. Are we, and I'm not hearing big changes to the table, other than maybe considering some kind of sliding scale and or maximum for just big lots.
It seems like there's.
Potentially.
There's potentially two sliding scales, one, you know, if you're looking at the size of the unit and the other is, you know, when you, when you really, you're getting dense, uh, for lot coverage, I mean, the lot coverage, you, you know, even sixty percent, it looks like some of these, you just can't do it.
Okay. So maybe lot coverage could be adjusted and, uh, Michael's idea of a different, different coverage for larger lots.
Those are nice.
Those that they had Angus Rail Yard once in Montreal.
Um, Fran?
Uh, what about, um, setbacks on, uh, in the two, um, medium? Uh, small, multi, medium, multi at twenty instead of thirty? And, and maybe the same in the.
Yep, that was, that was noted at the other meeting, that that was a remnant from the prior regulations, that was not intended to, that was a typo on my part. And I didn't manage to change it. I do have a question, or like Paul brought this up a little bit about talking about sort of the length of impervia, the amount of impervious that's added by a longer driveway. Um, is twenty the right number for front setbacks for new? For new, so what I have is, is twenty or average front setbacks of surrounding properties. Um, is twenty the right number or should it be lower? Cause there's a good number that I showed that were nine, thirteen, fourteen, seventeen. Um, there were only a few that were above twenty, so I wanted to know about the twenty-foot front setback. Question.
Could be smaller, could be less.
Less like, um.
Like fifteen.
Fifteen?
Fifteen and then, or fifteen or average, yeah.
So something I think I, I would encourage is if, um, fifteen sounds great, um, we in the R4 district currently, you allow for a front porch that goes a few feet even closer. The reason that you would do that is that a builder essentially makes their profit off the building itself. So if you say the building and its front por- and its voluntary front porch is fifteen or twenty or whatever you make it, then they're not gonna build a front porch. If you say you can oftentimes, or at least not a substantive one, if you say it's fifteen and then five more could be a covered front porch, but only a covered front porch, then you are sort of incentivizing somebody to build the kind of neighborhood features. And that's essentially if you, for those who, who are around at the East End of Market Street, the city actually gave the developer five feet of the right-of-way of Market Street so that they could put front porches on them, because otherwise they would have not put them. And that, you know, if those homes didn't have front porches, that would be a completely different environment in East End of Market Street. So, um, that's, that would be my recommendation.
Yep, I think the front porch is, yeah, yeah, fif- fifteen, but then ten or whatever, whatever it would be additional to get the.
What's a depth for a front porch? Like five seems shallow to me.
Um, if you wanna measure them, uh, there's two different sets of the East End of Market Street that to me are a really good case study.
Okay.
The four that are closest to City Hall here are six feet and the four closest to, uh, Heinsburg Road are seven feet. And you can see that that one foot makes a big difference, that they ran, they had one foot fewer because actually as a result of the fact that we made a, required a larger buffer at the back to the neighbors, they had one fewer foot to work with, and you see the differences, um, tables, tables and chairs can, can face each other versus they have to face out.
Yeah.
So the ideal, I think, would be seven. If you really wanted like a really functional space that people can.
Ideal is ten.
Well, yeah.
Cause that's what I had on my old house and it was a room.
Yeah, sev- seven becomes really functional as opposed to sort of a like cramped in.
Seven, I think, is minimal, yeah.
So I'm wondering if, if the.
I mean, if you're gonna build a porch.
If you move the front setback down to fifteen and then have a front porch exception for an additional seven or eight? Eight, Donna says? So then you end up with your front porch, the edge of your front porch being either seven or eight feet from, not, again, not from the asphalt, from the public right-of-way.
Right, and typically, at least in older neighborhoods in the city, uh, our streets are typically twenty feet wide, but our right-of-way is fifty feet wide. So there's fifteen feet off the pavement that belongs to the city and that's where you start count, sorry, fifteen feet of grass that belongs to the city, that that's where you start calculating. So even if you're only a few feet off that, you're actually functionally visually twenty-something feet off.
Um, am I hearing nodding at eight feet porches? Or seven, I heard a whole lot of nodding for a seven.
I mean, you could have the porch be whatever you want, but if you wanna incentivize it to be at least, say, seven, then you might say, uh, uh, building can be no closer than, say, fifteen feet. The front porch can extend seven feet in, that doesn't mean that they wouldn't choose to then make an eight-foot one by putting the house back.
One foot.
One foot or five feet more, but it just creates a.
Okay, so I think, are we done with the table? Cause I think, um, Kelsey and I talked about how it might make sense, um, to go a little out of order of the packet and do the TDR.
So the last thing actually before TDRs is, is I had in this, um, table that large multifamilies would require twenty-five hundred square feet per unit. Um, that is too big, um, professionally, that is, that is too much, um, to the point where Paul and I have been talking about it a bit, actually. And with the other requirements like setbacks and stormwater and civic space and site amenity and height restrictions and all sorts of things, lot coverage, um, we would actually recommend that there is not a minimum lot size for large multifamily buildings per unit. Um, because when you make it per unit, you're incentivizing larger unit, fewer, it's the same math that Paul was talking about for single-family homes. You may end up incentivizing fewer larger units than if you could put more smaller units. And I will say, we also would keep this, we would keep and probably And I will say, we also would keep this, we would keep and probably tweak a little bit the stopgap of housing mix requirements. Um, so you couldn't have a whole building that's all studio apartments, for example, that are five hundred square feet. Um, so first of all, that, that would be the proposal from, from us to you is. To not have a per unit minimum lot size, that it would be controlled by all these other things that go into the design of these larger buildings. Again, this is buildings from thirteen to infinity, numbers of units. Um, so we've seen, there's, there's a good number of you, of buildings around the city that are in the forty, fifty, eighty unit range. Um, and there's not a good way for that math for per unit to make sense compared with a thirteen unit building. They're very different things, um, so just removing that per unit requirement altogether would be our recommendation.
Just twenty five hundred square feet then.
No, no.
Townhouses and, and um, large multi of the places where you have it per unit.
This is just for large.
This is just large multi. Just for large multi is when this would go away, there would be no minimum lot size per unit.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, cause I couldn't figure out how.
Yeah, and it's, it's mostly be, it's also partially, the math is very different because these kinds of buildings are almost always multi-story. Um, so when you start going up, which is what we do want to do, and this is again, it's only, uh, the large multis are only allowed in. The three districts, C one auto, C two, and it should also say C one L R, um. That, those are areas where we do want the larger, the taller buildings um, to, to fit these large multis and having a per unit. Ground square footage doesn't make a, almost any sense if you're stacking up.
Right, so for example, the building uh, at the corner of Market Street and Garden Street that was built. Um, and open maybe two years ago on the, the north side of the street, um, if you include the building, it's stormwater ponds. It's required um, site amenity, and then they actually have about double the site amenity because they, they decided to put a playground in there. Um, it's uh, on its four stories, it's about eleven hundred square feet per unit, and imagine if they were to have added one more story on top of that. Um, they'd be down even below that, so the math doesn't really work. You could choose to have an overall minimum lot size if you want, and I think maybe Michael, that's where you were going, just a lot size period. Or you could choose to just not have one, because these are only allowed in the Shelburne Road corridor type places, in city center, we have no minimum lot size. Um, on Shelburne Road, we do have minimum lot size of, I think it's an acre.
Mm-hmm.
Um, one of the weird side effects of that, you've probably read a little bit in the newspaper, is that the, the, the Born Auto project. Where they wanted to do three smaller buildings on a lot, they've only got an acre and a half. Between that, so they've had to become a planned unit development, because they couldn't meet the minimum lot sizes, so they wanted to do residential building and then two commercial buildings. They could have done it as just one building and not been a P U D. Um, but then they wouldn't have been able to have this sort of scaling, they wanted to put the residential in the back and the. Commercial in the front on a two-story building, so that would be my argument for maybe you don't need a minimum lot size at all, um.
Just leave it out.
You know, and that's, that's essentially what we've been doing in the form based code, where you do, where you could put your energy and have put your energy and have talked about it, maybe enhancing it is. What's the site amenity requirement?
Right.
You know, instead of saying you just need a lot to need lot, say you need usable space that is for the use of the tenants and residents.
Right.
And then maybe they put that on the ground, maybe they do a beautiful rooftop thing, there's lots of dif- there's different ways that you can achieve that. And um, give them flexibility, but set the standard where you want.
So we already implemented a per unit amenity requirement, right, so that's already in place. And then we have the coverage requirements would be in place, so I, I agree with, it just seems like maybe you don't need.
Okay, and then I think this leads into the TDR question.
This is, this leads into the TDR question.
Paul, is the born, is that gonna be a T N D?
It's, it, it falls under the P U D type that you created about a year ago, the general P U D.
Okay.
Where they get, the board is authorized to give some um, flexibility, in this case, the flexibility that they're, the primary one that they were seeking was. Lot size, and then there's other things that are in.
So we're gonna.
Legal, so I'm not gonna speak about them at the moment, but that's, I wanted to flag that for the reason of lot size.
Okay, so.
TDRs.
TDRs.
Eight forty. We're pretty excited about moving on to TDRs. Go ahead, Brian.
Uh, regarding uh, moving the front setback closer, um, uh, currently, I, I wanna say it's four feet. That you have to offset a garage from the front face of the house. Is that right, Kelsey? Um, a garage has to be uh, offset from the front wall of the house by a certain number of feet. Eight feet, okay, so that would, even at fifteen feet, if you were next to a sidewalk, you could fit an S U V in there. Cool, that's what I wanted to clarify, um, and regarding the porch, um, if you put an eight foot porch uh, on one, you're not wasting. Wood from your standard eight foot cut lumber, and the railings and columns, plus the moldings coming off the house. Are going to restrict your inner movement area to seven feet, so eight feet is just efficient, more efficient to build. And still leaves you with the movable space inside.
Alright, uh, TDRs, so, um. Given everything with S one hundred and given the increase, well, the increase of effective availability for homes and for. Smaller multifamilies on more lots in the city and more subdivitability across the city. Um, paired with a, a real desire for our regulations to, from my perspective. For our regulations to say what they mean and mean what they say, um. Our proposal for TDRs is to only allow them for large, one, one option is to only allow them for lot, in, in a res- let me back up. In a residential application, only allow them for large multifamily buildings. Because when you start allowing them for single families and duplexes, first, those duplexes are already allowed by right. Um, three and fourplexes, we want to encourage them and have them. Very clearly allowed by our regulations and not have to buy TDRs to be able to get them, because it's an additional cost, it's legal. Um, time, it's further review, trying to, how, we want their, our neighborhoods to. Be regulated in a way that someone can look at the regulations and say, this is what the city wants here, so we, it wants lots that are a certain size that fit. One, two, three, four unit buildings, et cetera, and not have kind of this, it's not a backdoor necessarily, but like there's an ad- additional layer. That you require a TDR and suddenly some of those numbers change, cause that's what it currently has is. You have, you can use TDRs to get a different outcome than you are allowed to have by the plain reading of the main section of the regulations. But we recognize that there are TDRs that need to be used. And there are um, some options where we may want to provide additional flexibility on top of the flexibility that we are already. Uh, providing in the regulations, so proposal for residential would be only on large multis, which then restricts it to the. Three districts, C one auto, C one L R and C two, and that it would be for. Use with a certain amount of floor area, so we were proposing two thousand square feet of floor area would be the value of a TDR. But what that could mean is, for example, I did some, some rough math, if you had a one acre lot and your building coverage was fifty percent. You would have twenty one thousand, seven hundred and eighty fo- um, maximum footprint, so to have an additional floor. You could buy eleven TDRs, which would buy you twenty two thousand additional floor area. You couldn't, you could also buy two thousand square feet of footprint, but buy five TDRs to go up the five levels of the building. I'm getting blank, blank stairs, does this make?
Right, for, what Kelsey is saying, let's say you could have built a twenty thousand square foot footprint building. Maybe you wanna make it twenty two thousand square feet. Footprint times five stories, so you're, you'd buy five TDRs to add that. The idea of two thousand square feet being a unit and the, you know, the.
I made a note for myself here that, uh, building bulk is what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Uh, yep. An extra floor on a four-story building is a twenty five percent increase in floor space for which. Uh, a developer could buy TDRs.
Exactly.
Right, so if it was a, a one acre lot, each for two, and you maxed out your footprint, you would need to buy eleven, it, it was two thousand per TDR. You'd need to buy eleven TDRs to add an additional floor.
Full.
Full story, or you could build a half story or, or some other configuration, you could build.
An, an increase in building bulk can be achieved with TDRs.
Yeah, exactly, so if you think of it like a Lego brick, your Lego brick for a TDR is one story in hi- in height. And twenty, and two thousand square feet in base area. So then you might, thank you, you want, so you might need to stack up five Lego bricks to go up your five floors, or you can do your eleven to fill up a top floor.
Uh, I had a couple of other questions on the table, nineteen dash one, uh, elsewhere as well, but um. And uh. Under the density, oh, not density, under bonuses per TDR. You've got, for C one auto and C two, you've got one dwelling unit or.
So these tables need to be reworked completely, um.
Ten thousand square feet of building bulk. Right?
Or as, so these, I wouldn't recommend really looking at the individual. Yeah, so you could, this, these all need to be updated because they rely on dwelling units, and that's what we're saying, we should not be regulating, um, so you. This would be the, the article, I would say, spend the least time on, cause it will be updated based on the conceptual decisions that you all. Um, land on today about how you feel about adding, um, about the TDR being worth two thousand square feet of floor area. Um, and the, the sort of way that I've, I've laid that out.
And, and then what you would do to accompany that is you would then put whatever you are comfortable with as a maximum.
You could set a, you would set a cap, yeah.
So let's say you're in a district, um, Shelburne Road, what's it, what's the um, lot and building coverage fifty, sixty percent?
Fifty and seventy?
Fifty and seventy, let's say you say, we don't ever wanna go above, instead of fifty and seventy, sixty and eighty. You could put that as the upper cap, and you could say, well, we allow five stories, but we would allow up to seven, let's say. So you'd be able to buy these two thousand square foot Lego bricks up to that cap. So that you don't have a hundred percent lot coverage, or you don't have, you know, twenty six story building or whatever, whatever, so you can still put in your taps of whatever you're comfortable with. The last thing that we wanted to say, that we think this melts really nicely with what the state has required under affordable housing inclusionary. Because you automatically get one additional story as a result of doing, uh, if you meet, if you do a certain number of uh, affordable units. So this kind of dovetails with that, because it's essentially doing that same thing of you get more Lego bricks, so this kind of uses the same kind of. Essentially math, instead of having two things that, um, it's very hard to pair these up as a developer and right now. You know, even using our current regulations, it's, it's very hard for a developer to figure out, how do I get my affordable bonus and then. A TDR, and they don't really talk to each other, and it's just really hard math for them to figure out.
They don't need.
Well, if we're gonna, if you're gonna rework.
Saying it's two different ways of dealing with it, and so when they're thinking about their options, it's really hard for them to compare apples to apples.
We're talking about simplifying both.
Okay, if you're gonna rework this table, we should probably move on, but I do have a question of why we've excluded Allen Road and Swift.
Because they're part of the two district. Instead of the three district.
So, there, and I don't know, I'm, I'm not very too familiar with Allen Road, I'm very familiar with Swift, where there's. Uh, quite a, there's several large lots of commercial right now, like uh, Laser Place and a, another. Printing company, um. Which would be a good, very good for dense housing.
Go ahead.
Can, can I, can I answer the question maybe in this way, and this is really a question for you all? The two districts, right now as drafted in the table. Um, allow for the medium multiplex, which is up to twelve homes, but nothing bigger than that. I think the answer to the question, Michael, is if you're comfortable and if the commission is comfortable with Allen Road, Swift Street. Having the bigger buildings, then that could then apply there, the reason the TDRs don't exist is because the. Building type that is right now proposed for the Allen Road, Swift Street, and the other twos, is capped at twelve units in a building. So I think.
Yeah, I, I asked the question, because in both cases, both Swift and Allen Road, there are big buildings. Already.
Yeah, I'm trying, that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at, Donna.
Um, I mean, twelve units is a relatively big building, you're saying you want bigger than twelve units.
Well, I'm thinking of the commercial buildings that are there already, they, you know, where U B S, is it U B S is, and uh. And, and then there's another office building behind that building.
So Swift's, the Swift, I'm looking at Swift, for example, um, we were originally putting it in two. Um, to, as a, a bit of a transition from Shelburne Road up to the, the smaller, the ones up the hill. Um, but Swift in particular, it does not go that far up the hill, it basically ends behind Clingers and. Behind, you know, about halfway up where Feral Park would be, um, so if the, if the commission wants, I'm. Happy to reorganize that and put Swift into three, and it would have the, the standards that applied to three, cause looking at it, it is all. Um, currently built out to commercial standards, um, and, and building sizes in that area. Yeah, Paul just pulled it up there.
Yeah, that's, uh, yeah, it's a good point, Michael, you know, in my head, I was thinking it went further up the hill, and therefore it was a, the two. Two transition, but. Based on what's there already, maybe the three does make.
And there, there's a really steep embankment right here.
Yeah.
That makes for a natural divider, um, and this was approved for a twenty unit built, uh, eighteen unit building.
So.
Uh, was approved and they, for a variety of reasons, let it expire, but it was vertically no higher than the. Home next to it, because there's that much of an embankment.
Yeah, cause if you move along Feral, then you'll see.
Uh, right, this is the end of the Swift Street district, that, that's it, you get to the interstate.
Those lots are, basically, you've got small buildings on a lot of space.
Yeah.
Commercial.
Okay, so let's look at Spear.
So Allen Road.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Allen, um, Allen Road.
I think it's a little bit, it's a little bit different, in my mind, the buildings, except for Pepsi, are on the smaller scale, um, and the larger buildings that you see are. Um, some senior housing, um.
Um, more senior housing.
More senior.
Moved as senior housing, but are not currently, one of them is not occupied.
Okay.
Which is relevant, because if it was gonna be reoccupied, there, the number of units allowed in that district would be a relevant conversation.
That little, that's PepsiCo, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
And then the, the church is behind, sort of to the side of that, on, on Allen. The building that I don't know what it is.
Is it?
And then all of this is a habitat block back here, just to be clear on.
Yeah, and on the other side, opposite PepsiCo was what Beatrice Foods or whatever it was called before, I don't know what it is now.
Yeah.
That one. Yeah.
Right, and this is.
I know, that's a day, half a daycare and half a gym, with an, one apartment in the middle, actually. And then a few things along Shelburne Road.
We doesn't seem terrible, I mean, it seems like the existing transition is, I mean, there's something kind of big right there already.
Right, that's actually out of the district, but those are four-story buildings right there.
So, so that, so a transition already exists outside.
Move them to three?
I, I, I don't know, is there any opposition on the board here to moving them to the number three district? Yeah, okay, good point, let's move to three.
Good.
Um, since you're having this conversation, we wanted to flag one other one that fell in that same category, um, because of what's been approved essentially. Um. The, this is the corner of Kennedy Drive and Kimball Avenue, this is the Commercial One Limited Res Retail, it's currently in the two. This is the Commercial One Limited Res Retail, it's currently in the twos, is that right?
No, it's with the threes.
Oh, that is with the three already.
Yeah, but it's separated by uses.
Ah, okay, it's already with the three, so we just wanted to flag that this area. Has already been uh approved for large buildings, um two of them have been built, um four more are. Uh already approved for construction here, and then it is anticipated that these lots would have, the board has given um. In their review has granted what heights they're already gonna have, so that's that's sort of a known quantity.
So is it the dark brown that you were just pointing at, is that in the R twelve?
That's R twelve.
So that's currently in.
That to this district.
Right, so that's currently in the two, but we can move the boundary, there's nothing that prevents us from moving the boundary. Uh to that being C one L R.
Right. And then this would go back to being R twelve, which is a more natural boundary anyway, because that's a single and two-family homes in there.
Yeah, well, if it's already allowed, and that's some of them built, then we should move.
Right.
So that's Kennedy, right?
This is Kennedy right here, yeah. And more than already allowed, it's already permitted, so it's, it's going to be built under this barring something unexpected happening.
Funny, Treetops looks absolutely becolic in comparison.
Okay.
So the new mantra is build it and we will change it?
How um?
No, we're getting ahead of it here, Michael.
So I guess my, for the T D Rs for use in residential, is the commission. Comfortable with having it available only for large multifamilies, which are only available in the three. C one auto, C two, and C one L R, and.
Go ahead.
Um for the two thousand square feet per value per T D R, a floor area.
And I, can I make one minor correction to that? Those are mixed-use districts, so the thing that you could buy would be two thousand square feet of space.
Yes.
Regardless of whether it's residential or commercial, so on Shelburne Road, if in that example of your, you know. Three-story building with a maximum footprint of twenty thousand, if you wanted twenty-two thousand, you could buy it with T D Rs. Where irregardless of, regardless of whether it's residential or commercial, it's just two thousand square feet of building bulk.
Yeah.
Just wanted to clarify that.
And what about, we've sold one for lot coverage, and I think it was ten thousand square feet for. One T D R.
Right, so we we would recommend that you change, update that to represent. Two thousand square feet of building or lot.
Okay.
And then you've got a a singular number that's being used across the board.
It used to be for one dwelling unit, but that two thousand square feet.
That's what we were trying to think of as being an approximate equivalent of a dwelling unit.
Of a, in a multi-family, a large multi-family being unit plus stairs, plus elevator shaft, plus, you know, their pieces.
Of two thousand square feet.
Okay, well, I think I'm seeing some nodding, um will you come back to us with some of those caps that you had talked about?
Yep.
Um, okay. Anything else on T D Rs?
Um there had been discussion at previous meetings about be allowing the use of T D Rs for purely commercial or industrial uses. So that would be having them be available to use in districts like the mixed I C, I O, um C one air. Things like that um for commercial or industrial s- building space or lot coverage. Um is that something that you are interested in, and does, is the same two thousand square feet. An appropriate number?
Yeah, very much interested in it, and yeah, probably the two thousand square feet should be, we should keep it uniform.
Yeah, and I I I just wanna say out loud that I agree with not. Using it for the smaller building types, for the reasons that Paul brought up. Like, we don't wanna make someone buy something extra to build an extra unit or an extra um small home. You know, I I think we wanna just make sure that that's allowed, it's really clear.
Great, yep. So that's all I have for T D Rs, and we'll come back with the updated um table and language, and for for now, you can ignore Article nineteen.
Um I did wanna just flag for you related to T D Rs, because you asked us to do some homework, it's in your memo. But just a a quick note, um we did an update to the T D R analysis that was done in during interim zoning, when there were. About thirteen hundred T D Rs available, because of the zoning changes that you made in twenty twenty-two that excluded hazards. That brought us down to uh about eight hundred and um. Eight hundred and forty becoming available instead of um thirteen hundred, and um. Uh after what was discussed by the commission, i- if the city takes land that is um parkland. And moves it from N R P over to park designation, which is something you talked about, the city would therefore no longer have T D Rs in those. Those are about sixty T D Rs as well. If you did that, the city would be, th- there would be about seven hundred and seventy-five remaining T D Rs. Um Jessica, um you had proposed an idea of if a property is able to be built otherwise, maybe they shouldn't also get T D Rs. Um roughly, if you did that, that is about a hundred T D Rs worth. Um so that brings the total down to um six hundred and sixty remaining. Of those, about four hundred have already been severed, meaning they haven't been used. But they have been legally removed from the property, so that land is conserved, so that's largely the Vermont Land Trust. Where they have gone through the procedural step of severing it from it um. So, you know, that's the universe of what is remaining in T D Rs, so there's a lot, there's still. You know, somewhere between six hundred and fifty and eight hundred to be used. In terms, on the, on the application side, in terms of the additional conservation to be achieved, there's about two hundred and fifty. Um remaining at um eight tenths of an acre. So on the scale of the city, it is a much smaller scale than where you were. When the city first put in the T D R program in two thousand and six. When they were north of two, two thousand of them, so just wanted to sort of give a scale of. The various different actions between development, conservation, partnerships. Um regulations of of where, what is, what's the universe now?
Question, so it's, if you're using T D Rs um for additional lot coverage, and but. I mean, then you have stormwater issues that have to be resolved some other way, or how does that, how do you balance that out?
Well, so stormwater, this is more Jessica's world, so I'm gonna give two sentences of introduction that please take it from there. Stormwater could theoretically be underground.
Right.
Stormwater, um there are years, I believe, where you can do, I I'm gonna get the wrong word, but site balancing, where if you. You can do something off-site in the same watershed um to. Account for the stormwater problem that you've got on your site, right? Because ultimately, it's it's what the river is, it's what the watershed is doing, it doesn't really matter site by site if you're making an improvement. Is that two good?
Yeah, I think that's two good examples, and um. You know, also a portion of the remaining lot coverage could be stormwater, you know, like a wetland or a. Um like a stormwater wetland or a bio-retention area.
Your site amenity, like right next door to it, the senior housing has a whole um seating area around. Uh a little, you know, attractive little wetland thing, so they managed to combine the two of them. Um and we do give credit for up to X number of feet into a stormwater.
But but I I do think like when when we're looking at those adjusted caps of the lot coverage, like. We don't want a hundred percent lot coverage, we want, um but stormwater, um they're gonna have to deal with it. And there are ways to do that without taking up herbius surface.
Okay, so it's, it's not ignoring it.
No, no, it definitely wouldn't be ignoring it. All right, um so Kelsey, I know we skipped some things, um what. I mean, it'd be nice to make sure you have what you need to continue moving forward, even if we don't get to everything, which we probably won't.
Right, um so the next thing is actually inclusionary zoning, um. Which is just a little thing, just a tiny, small thing.
Well, just so T D Rs, so I think we're ready.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're going through, we're doing well. Um the state as part of S one hundred has defined an affordable housing development, and. The state grants an additional floor to any building that qualifies as an affordable housing development. Um to be in affordable housing development under state statute, it's either five units. Or twenty percent of your units are affordable for fifteen years. Um whichever is greater of those two numbers. So if you're, the math on it works out that if you are under twenty-five units, you need to do five. If you are over twenty-five units, you need to do twenty-five percent or twenty percent to get that state-level bonus. What the Affordable Housing Committee has proposed, um when we asked them about about this question, is to adjust. Our current inclu- inclusionary zoning um setup to mesh with that, but to make more of it mandatory. So it would be to move the requirement for inclusionary from twelve, at the threshold from twelve down to ten. Um and make it required, um ten percent of the units have to be inclusionary. Or have to be afforded permanently, and they want, and they recommended permanent affordability instead of fifteen-year affordability, but that's another. Um thing that the commission can decide to alter if you want. Um there's also a provision in our current inclusionary zoning that the defines sort of the round-up, round-down. Um of those units, because ten percent of of, you know, not that many units be gives you not-round numbers, so effectively. From ten to fourteen units, you would be required to do one, from fifteen to nineteen, um you would have to do two, and for. The what they proposed was at twenty percent, having that second threshold of moving from ten percent to twenty percent. Um. It is cleaner in my mind to have that second threshold at twenty-five, because that's the same as the state. Um so you'd be, any building above, any development more than ten units would be required to have either ten or twenty percent. Affordable, um mandatory at the city level. But once you hit what the state considers an optional level of the defined affordable housing development. Where the city will still require you to do twenty percent, but you get that state-granted extra floor. Simple as that.
So I, uh Vince, are, are Vince, are you here with the committee? Is there anything that you would like to say before we start in? Okay, Kelsey does, Kelsey does an excellent job, so, um Donna? Yeah. Oh, just agreeing, okay, did, were you trying to say something before I went to Vince though?
No, I just, I just said to Kelsey that I agree, that this was, this actually is something I understand.
Okay.
Yeah.
Awesome, um anyone have questions or comments?
I, I had a couple of, I I noticed a couple of things that on page seven. Under applicability item one. I think you need to have the word that permit residential uses in there.
Yes, I saw that.
And then, um, I I need an explanation of something on page eight, which is all approved phases of development shall be counted toward. The dwelling units, does that mean that the um affordability bo- bonuses will be established?
The me- meeting the affordability will be, the meeting the mandatory affordability requirements has to be. In each phase. So that hypothetically, uh someone comes in and has a four-phase development planned, and they say, oh, we'll do all of our affordable in the fourth phase. And then something happens, and they go bankrupt, and they stop developing it, and there's no affordable units because they stopped, we're trying to avoid that by having. The percentage of each phase be affordable.
Okay, so they would only get the bonus when they construct the phase. Not, they won't be awarded the bonuses based on their, on their application.
That is a good question, I'll have to think about it.
I mean, it can be done as a, when there's a certificate of occupancy, then those bonuses are confirmed, but um.
No, that's a good point, Michael.
I I I, it needs a little work and thinking.
Yep, I agree, thank you.
Um. I have a general, more, a more general comment, which I've made before, and maybe Vincent's heard it from me as well, that. In, for inclusionary uh units. We've heard it from every, every developer that we've spoken to, they, they can't build a single-family home. Well, they're very reluctant to do so because of the cost. And it would be great if, if, if our chapter eighteen said they all have to be multifamily. Duplex, triplex, multifamily, because Donna pointed out, they're much more efficient use of land. Much more efficient from a thermal management point of view, uh and much more affordable. So it's not something, I mean, it's something that maybe the, I raised it once before. Um with a member of the committee, um. And I think the response was, well, people like, people like single-family homes, um. Which is true, but they aren't affordable.
I guess what I would say is, I don't, I think that the market will regulate that itself. Um if you had, say, a sixty thousand square foot lot, and we're putting five thousand square foot. Lot or lots in that subdivision plus a road or something, um and you were gonna put ten homes on it. The economics of, as you said, the economics of building those homes, um you can, there is no difference in a dwelling unit. Being affordable, if it's a single-family home or in a multi-family, um but the market value price. And the cost to build is much higher, so um it has to meet um the the speci- specific. Selling price or rental price for, based on area median income. Um so I would be very surprised if someone built a ten-unit subdivision, all single-family homes. And had one of, they would have to make one of them affordable. They could do that, I think they would be taking a hit, and I'm not sure if it would pencil out, um I don't think it's something that's necessary to. Regulate, because I think it would be very rare.
Uh we'd also get more, more affordable units for the total dollar, dollars expended.
Right, but I guess, I guess my just two cents about it, pardon the pun about cents, but um is. That that is on the decision-making of the developer and how much they wanna spend for the development.
Yeah, maybe the market take care of it.
Yeah.
Um and then on page ten, uh under. Units required under this section shall be, and then it says. Inclusionary units shall be physically integrated into the, into and complement the overall layout, scale and massing. Of the proposed development, which I remember we put in when we did this. Um but then you say, then we write, units shall be, I. This criterion may be achieved in a single building or multiple buildings, which seems to cancel out what we're trying to do. We're trying to get the affordable units distributed throughout, but then we say we can also put it in one building, and. Uh the whole idea was to avoid any kind of ghettoization by having all the affordable units in one.
So I I will just note, that's language that I haven't touched, that's lang- that's language that's in our current L D Rs. Your point is well taken, but that's not something that I've proposed to change, so that's what was already in there from the last time that this was amended.
Well, I'm proposing that we should su- suggest a change.
Do you, are you thinking that that next paragraph doesn't get at um? The point, like, I think that that next paragraph was in there until. Um. Get at the point, like, they can't look like stinky housing.
If we just stopped and didn't say this criterion may be achieved, if we just stop that. Inclusionary u- units shall be physically integrated into and complement the overall layout, scale and massing of the proposed development, finished.
Okay, so you're just proposing to remove that last clause?
Yeah. Because it, it. It contradicts that first sentence that I just read.
Probably look like you're contemplating if we need that for some reason.
Well, I guess I'm wondering, um. Is the intent there that it then would not be allowed in one of those two circumstances? Because it says can, maybe achieved in a single building or multiple. Because it says can maybe achieved in a single building or multiple buildings.
I think I think Michael's point is that it should not be in a single building.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, you're welcome to propose as you choose. I think that those who build affordable housing as the the sort of nonprofit or the state-supported system are going to push back hard on that, because their sys- I'm yeah, I I'm not saying that you have to follow. But the reason that it exists that way is if we look at, say, City Center, um Champlain Housing Trust um built a building. And if we look at O'Brien um uh Summit built two buildings of seven. The models of financing, if it's going to involve dollars that aren't just carried by the private sector are often at that scale. Now, O'Brien Eastview, where they're not doing that, um they have put eight or nine inclusionary units within triplexes, not within the same one, but as one of eight different triplexes. So there are ways to achieve it.
As long as the summit development, for example, doesn't absolve the developer, in this case, O'Brien Brothers, from from doing what we ask them to do, which is distribute the uh afford, because you know, the the affordable housing units aren't supposed to look different either.
Right, and I think that in that instance, what the board reviewed was there are six large buildings approved. They needed demonstration that they are going to be visually integrated visually the same as Sydney Center gets built out. One, two, three of the buildings are essentially fully affordable, but they won't look any different than the other five that are being built. So I I think that if that's your intent, it's being met um by the requirement of physically integrated into and with the same exterior construction materials.
Everything else is okay. Uh. Yeah, as long as the as long as the rest of, I mean, the the land up on which the summit buildings were built belonged to O'Brien Brothers. Um as long as if something like that happened somewhere else, as long as the developer still has to comply with chapter eighteen requirements, that's fine. And just for for you, um Kelsey, on the next paragraph, it should be details and quality of those.
I think Donna, you had some.
Items.
Two then.
I've got a couple.
That's funny, I didn't touch that one either. That that I didn't touch that one either. That's a that's a typo that's been in there.
No, no, it's just a typo.
Yeah.
Um.
Do you still have more, Michael? Because I think Donna had some things too.
Go ahead, Donna. I'll looking, I'm just checking that I don't have anything else.
Yeah, I mean, I had I had a few notes, I just various things, but um this whole section on congregated care units.
Oh.
That that was that really was confusing, because I thought, well, how do you designate inclusionary units in congregated care? If you know, because it's usually privately managed and like, how how would that even work? Any idea?
I don't think that.
It's, well, there was some some changes in, yeah, it's like.
Wha- what page is that on?
Tell me, what page is this?
Uh eight, pardon, yeah, most of it's on eight or eight or twenty.
Yeah, eight, it's B.
Because I thought, you know, it's it's, yeah, they are rental units, but I mean, the way they manage those, I mean, are some of them more affordable than others? I know it usually as a as an entire um project or an entire property. I know some of them will take Medicare, oops, some of them will take Medicare patients and some won't. But I didn't know that they could, you know, that they had some some portions of it that handled um lower income cases than others. I I just wasn't even aware of that.
We can certainly look into it a little bit more. Congregate care is our own definition. So it's not a state-regulated type of housing. It is essentially.
It's not senior housing then.
It it is senior housing. Well, no, it's it's
Senior.
It 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 is typically see, it's for older citizens with amenities. So it's not about disabilities necessarily, it's demonstrating that and says something like there has to be at least three of the following types of amenities, uh meals and or recreation space and or programming and or so it's it's not the same level as assisted care or continuum of care facilities that all get it all sorts of state regulations. It's trying to hit this sort of middle spot of
Like the pines.
Like the pines, yes.
I think you're talking about co-housing. That's the term that where there are amenities as well as.
Well, the pines is probably a better example. It's a commercial one, because co-housing is kind of a unique thing.
Right, the pines is an example, the former gazebo apartments.
Yeah.
Um were um it's uh it it we've actually been looking at some examples of this very recently. It it's a field that the market is evolving quickly on. Um meaning like what was provided fifteen years ago is different than what is able to be provided today for a whole bunch of reasons that are way outside of our control. And so our definition is feeling a little antiquated, but the purpose is to allow people to stay at a scale that is a little bit larger than um you know, single, two, three, four family homes with some level of services before they're sort of at the nursing home stage of life where they can stay in their neighborhood or at least in their community.
Hmm.
Um.
Yeah, it's just that how the inclusionary kind of fits within that. I I just I can't really even imagine how that how that really works. Um then I put a note. Then here, you know, under price, maximum rent and purchase price calculations. And it says housing costs shall include for inclusionary rental units, rent and utilities, water, electricity and heating costs. And I guess in a lot of these buildings, it all of that's provided? Is it, you know, because.
No, those are the the this, you can't charge, it's es- there's estimates for things like utilities. But then that has to be factored into the total allowed housing cost that then sort of back. The math goes backwards to get to rent.
So it's based on an estimate.
Yeah, so you have your affordable, your average, your and your median in area median income, and then eight percent of that is the threshold, and then thirty percent of that is your housing cost. And then of the total housing cost, you take out estimates of utilities, like the ones those ones listed to land on a maximum rent. Like if your total housing cost what that's allowed was fifteen hundred dollars and those utilities total cost two hundred dollars in a month or two fifty, you would have to go backwards and only charge a rent of twelve hundred or something.
Okay, so yeah, that that kind of hopefully incentivizes builders to make these really super efficient.
Page twenty-two. Page twenty-two.
Oh.
Okay.
Um there's a typo. I won't read.
Michael, I was doing a lot of things.
I won't read it. You can read it.
Okay, you can also take give the typos directly.
Yeah, you're welcome to send me an email with typos that you find.
Assessed.
Yes.
Then I had a question and Vince might want to comment on twenty-five percent on uh uh if a building is removed, the payment to the excuse me, to the Housing Trust Fund of twenty-five five percent of value of the building seems quite small. Hello.
That um that's something that's not changing, but you're saying we should consider changing.
Look at it for, I don't know.
How? No, you I don't think you did either, but I think Michael's saying maybe you should think about it.
Jack jack it up a bit. No further, no further comments, Your Honor.
I did have one other one.
Donna?
Um the continued affordability section? Um I'm just curious about it. So it's the city shall have under resale restrictions. The city out shall have the option to purchase or transfer its option to purchase inclusionary ownership units at each future time of resale and how's how's that work? You know, and the city actually has money to do stuff like that?
Um well, that's why it's an option. Um. This is, uh the reason that that's in there, as I understand it, is uh there are uh the the mortgage world is very complex when it comes to um how to deal with inclusionary. Um mortgage companies have usually the 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 first sort of right to a to to something that is on a foreclosure or anything like that. Language like this allows the city to step in if it ha- if it chooses to, so we don't have a fund for it today. Um but this is um uh uh.
Gives you some possibilities in the future?
Uh to quote a former developer um about some some unrelated thing, perpetuity is a long time. So the city five years now or fifty years now may very well have a fund for doing that. And this puts that op- that option in there now.
Hmm.
For homes.
Yeah, and then I don't know if there was anything specifically in here, because I I wrote wrote a note up here. Um I I guess this was after talking with somebody who had who had moved in in the housing next door. And and she had moved in from out of state and she didn't have any relatives here or anything like that. And so I just just kind of was curious if there's any provision that guarantees that the purchase goes to somebody who needs housing who's local. There it's not possible to do that.
No.
And then the other thing is, because this happens an awful lot with some of the most affordable units in my neighborhood, is the people buy them just to kind of be there for a few months in the summertime. And they live somewhere else most of the time. You know, they're they're not full-time residents at all. They're not even half-year residents. They they come for a couple of months and the house is completely empty. And these are affordable townhomes and there's nobody in them. The one building, there's four four units and only one of them is occupied year round. And those aren't considered affordable, but they are.
The what you might be potentially, uh are they not, they're not per they're not legally affordable, they're just less in lower in price, is that what you're saying?
Townhouses, you know, they were the, you know, the lower-cost townhouses.
Sure, that's just.
They're not townhouses, but people, there's like almost none of them. You know, it's a relatively small percentage of of certain ones that aren't occupied year round at all.
Right, and that's, I mean, we can't do much about that. Um the rental registry has been pushing back on on people buying homes to rent them and not be there if they're only going to live here for a month a year and rent it the rest of the time. Um.
It would be good if they did do that.
This section deals with uh inclusionary, um it deals with affordable housing that's based on income. Um. It's 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 a different threshold than just buying a low-cost townhome. And it's kind of a different, it's a kind of a different question.
Yeah, but if they, if somebody owned one.
Mm-hmm.
Um and they decided they wanted to live with their, you know, with their son-in-law or, you know, with their with their son and and daughters in Florida for part of the year.
Yep.
And the unit wasn't occupied. Is there anything that says that if you if, you know, if you're going to use and if you're going to either rent or own a subsidized unit, that it actually has to be occupied?
Or at least not an Airbnb.
Well, so.
Now, I feel like that needs to be somewhere.
Right, so the rental registry in short-term rentals does say that you no longer can you have a um a a essentially a a dwelling unit that is a um Airbnb for more than the fourteen days of the year that is below the threshold of taxation at the state level before below being considered short-term rental. So you can't rent a whole unit other than an accessory dwelling unit on your own property um for as as a short-term rental. Moving forward, there are a few that are pre-existing that the council has got to uh put in put in a um a time limitation, I think, for the next four years on. Um but if somebody can't buy a unit and then rent it out.
But I think to Donna's question, if someone rents and pays the rent on a unit or owns it and and pays the mortgage or or whatever and then decides, you know, I'm getting older and I want to live somewhere with my with my family who's somewhere else. I don't think there's a way to require a person to live in the home that they're paying for. Um they're.
As long as, yeah, it's, I think that that would move into the category of some things that some other places around North America have been exploring of essentially if there's an unoccupied building tax.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think we have any authority to do that currently under as a Dylan pool state, which is a whole different category of unoccupied units. Um. Yeah.
Page thirty-three. Under article, chapter four. Uh under permitted conditional uses, it's just under item two in commercial use shall not be permitted on local streets within the I think that should be MSR.
Yep. There are a few typos sort of throughout some of these sections, because there's bits and pieces that were copied, because they were they applied to more than one of the districts. So this is a a rough.
Just flag it when I see it.
Very good.
Okay, now here's another question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh Fran?
Go ahead.
Well, yeah, so in some places I saw MSR and some places MSN.
Yep, so we were at one point calling it the low-scale residential and then shifted to calling it low-scale or medium-scale neighborhood.
Right.
Um with reflecting that it wouldn't be a hundred percent residential, because we'd be allowing some of these small neighborhood-scale commercial uses. So again, that's me, that's typos, that's cleanup.
Going to be one or the other.
It's going to be one or the other. This is, it's some of the things that you're seeing are the reflection of me working on many articles of the LDRs over time. And so I might have been using one acronym in January and now I'm using a different acronym acronym in March. So this is all stuff that I'll be coming through.
Um well, is there anything else on the inclusionary zoning or
Not for my.
Questions that you specifically have, Kelsey? Because I think Michael's saying we should move on.
Nope.
Um so we didn't get to article fifteen restructuring or the public outreach piece, item seven. But I'm hearing that Michael's interested in wrapping up the meeting with.
So just the one.
Were you trying to move on?
The kind of one-sentence version of article fifteen is just a preview. Um article fifteen includes subdivision, master plan and PUD. I have been working on um streamlining and coordinating between those three, so it's fifteen A, fifteen B and fifteen C. Um trying to make them work better together, trying to make the process more clear about what steps you do when. So everything from, you know, submission requirements and process through to um tweaking some of the requirements to make different pieces work together better. So that's just coming attractions um for the next couple of meetings. That's the last big piece that you haven't seen yet.
Okay, and then um public outreach, do we want to get into that or wait till next meeting or do you have a?
I think it would be good to just get into it for a second, um just because of the schedule for certain things. Um the two questions that we had is um are what are there specific pieces of information, maps, images, um sort of FAQ-type section ex- explanatory things that the commission would want to, that the commission wants to see published to the public about all these things, it would be on city website. Um advertised in city news, uh published in the other paper or or at least directed to the website from the other paper. Um are there any particular things that have been helpful to you that should be kind of cleaned up? We we tend to show you guys working versions of things, but items that could be cleaned up and presented to the public. Um and then the second question, just to put it all out, is um public information meeting. Do you want, A, do you want to have one? B, do you want it to be during an existing um planning commission meeting time? Or should there be another date or time during the day, on a weekend, a different weeknight, something like that? Um and then through the third part is, are you comfortable with that meeting occurring after warning a public hearing? So it would be between warning a public hearing and holding a public hearing, where you can make additional tweaks based on the the meeting, if necessary.
I think if we do that, it shouldn't be at a regular planning commission meeting. Uh if we're going to have a public conversation, it should be separate. Conversation, it should be separate. We might get more input that way.
So are you thinking separate, um, like another evening or separate like during the day sometime? Get a different crowd.
Where, where, what's likely to get us the best in, the best attendance?
I actually think that the, the way to get the best attendance is to advertise it early and provide a lot of, um. A lot of material on the website that people can review on their own time and then decide. I do want to say something, I don't want to say something and including our planning department email address. Um, because then people have time to digest things instead of walking into a meeting and being handed a bunch of information and not. Being able to process it. So I think that's actually the most important thing is to get some of the information that we've been providing to you. Whatever you'd like to present to the public, maybe cleaned up and, and put on our website. Um, which I think would drive more meeting traffic and, and feedback from other.
Yeah, and I, and I think that the other component of that is. As, as you know better than almost anybody, this is really dense stuff. So helping to make it accessible at a level of. Um, you know, a sort of whether it's FAQs or a little bit more. Conversational language that describes. Um, what it is that you're proposing so that somebody can give feedback, not necessarily on should it be six thousand or sixty-two hundred or fifty-eight hundred square feet? But here, here's what the proposal is. Um, with, with some of the, maybe some of the examples that you've been seeing over the last few meetings of maps and or some of these, uh, illustrations. So that they can access it in a way that isn't assuming that everybody's going to read a seventy-five page detailed. Eleven-point font, no pictures document.
The other thing is what, what day or what time, I mean. Seven o'clock in the evening, you know, young families are busy with their kids, uh, I, I like to eat. My dinner around there.
I mean, I guess we might suggest if you, if you like this approach generally of warning the public hearing, setting a public hearing data doesn't have to be the minimum time period. And then following some of the procedures that you did with the city plan. Of two or three listening sessions that may or may not be all of you in attendance at some different times of day. With a little bit of an overview presentation at the beginning and then sharing it. Makes it a little bit less of a, what do you have to say at our public hearing? S- sort of environment. Tapped by a public hearing and then you take it all together.
As long as you, you, one of, one of you is willing to be there to provide the technical back, backup.
Sure.
If all we need to do is the technical backup.
Yeah.
If you help make the presentation as well, I'm gonna like put that out there. My presentations go much better when you prepare them for me.
Well, I think the visuals that, that you showed us, that sort of thing is, is absolutely necessary and. You know, to get it out into the public, you know, even. I mean, I don't know far and faints, but the other paper is a great way to get people's attention. And, you know, and make it clear that these are minimums. We're not saying it has to be this way. You know, repeat that over and over again because that's what people are going to say. Oh, you're going to say we all have to crowd into these tiny lots. No. This is the minimum, the, we, this exists in the city. They're nice. You know, and, uh, you know, kind of do it in a friendly kind of way and it like, well, we're looking for input, you know. Think about your own lot and if you have a deeper lot, how would you? You know, how would you be able to do something about that? And that would be for me a very interesting, just kind of a sit-down session around tables.
Well, and, and paired with that, we might suggest, once you've sort of landed on your public hearing. Maybe you'd like to assign one or two of you to prepare something for the other paper. That speaks about it in those language.
Sure.
That is a little less technical of what we can write, even if we make it accessible and a little bit more of the why. From, from the perspective of some commissioners. So just a thought about different ways to share that and then say. You know, this is what we're thinking.
I'd be happy to help with that.
So just, just some different thoughts on that.
Oh, um, Vince, go ahead.
Yes, fair housing month.
Yeah.
Accessory dwelling units. Doing a book discussion on homelessness. Last year's book discussion.
His mic is not on.
Oh.
Oh, Sue, sorry, Vince is speaking from the audience.
Uh, I'll, I'll summarize, well, go ahead, Vince.
Say it again.
I just wanted to say that, uh, April is fair housing month. And, uh, the Affordable Housing Committee is sponsoring a panel on accessory dwelling units. On, I think the eighteenth and then on the thirtieth, we're doing a book discussion of a very good book on homelessness. The subtitle of it is The Problem Is Housing or something like that. So anyway. Well, you know, at least some segment of the community is thinking housing. And that's really what this is about. So maybe we can win them in some way or at least piggyback on each other's energy.
Thank you, Vince.
I would say just as a point of, of timeline, I think that, uh, the April ninth and April twenty-sixth meetings. Of the planning commission will, will still be dealing with, with this and this language, including the, um. Transportation demand management and EV charging. Um, the earliest meeting that we would anticipate moving for a public hearing would be that April twenty-sixth meeting, um, just for. Timeline, that would be the, the earliest. It may also be in May.
Nice to get it in housing month.
Yeah, see how it goes.
Um, Fran, here.
I think one of the other things, uh, that people would want to know is how much of the city is this change going to affect? You know, you all had the maps that showed us.
Oh, the water sewer service?
No, uh, the, the lot sizes in typical areas of the neighborhood, uh, of the city. Rather, so if we go to a five thousand square foot lot. Where are the impacts? You know, are they, what, what?
Fran, are you talking about when I was showing maps about if it's five thousand square feet, then this many lots are subdivisible? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a, that's a good one.
Yeah, I, I think. What I'm hearing, Fran, is not necessarily so much the mathematical numbers, but what areas of the city. So if you live in X neighborhood. Should you be expecting that there might be some change coming out of this? I think the short answer to it is. Unless you live in Clean City Park where they're already close together, if you're in a typically single, two-family home neighborhood. There, um, may be some changes coming out of this. And if you're in a large multifamily home neighborhood, it's. The changes probably won't. Won't be apparent to you because you're, you're already at that scale. The changes might sort of demonstrate that the next iterations. For a lot of things that you've done over the last few years include a little more civic space and, um, site amenities and, and that kind of thing. So. But we can certainly make that a little more plain English for folks so that people can see, you know, I live here. What does that mean?
Yeah, I think, I, I think the neighborhood was orchard. Part of it has smaller lots and then a later section of it has much bigger lots.
Yep.
And they, they might want to know, okay, what's this going to do to this neighborhood?
Right. And then, you know, there's neighborhoods that are structured differently in terms of. Uh, land that is individual lots versus, uh, shared lots. And. That's a little bit beyond the scope of what we can really get into here. And so we can't necessarily get into every single neighborhood, but we can say it in, in. A little more generalities, um, you know, South Villages lots are already at or below. All of the numbers that you're talking about today because that's the way it was designed with one big giant, um. Open space and the farm. And so the lots are already five thousand square feet. So they're not going to see very much change. Um, likely out of this, other than theoretically, somebody could take, you know, one of those homes and make it a duplex.
Well, and, and then I, I'd answered questions, one, you know, when we were talking about EDUs even. And, you know, someone who lives in a, in an area that was built when the lots were big and the houses were big. Kind of said, why would anybody want to do that? And I think that's, that in itself kind of makes an interesting. You know, an interesting, uh, you know, at least portion of, of a, you know, that. Things are changing for people and if you, if you need help in your home, you know, that you probably have to house somebody. To, you know, to be able to have, have a helper. Um, that there's, there's a lot of reasons that you might want to have an additional unit on your lot. Where people might not have thought that when they bought it, but now, you know, they're, they're thinking maybe changing.
Or, you know, generationally, it's really hard for younger people to purchase. Maybe this is, you know, a little more intergenerational housing at the accessory dwelling unit, maybe for the. Twenty-seven-year-old and their spouse. Um, because that wasn't an option. That, that wasn't really what happened demographically so much twenty years ago. And now. We're seeing a lot more of that. So it could be in lots of different versions.
So just on this. Sorry, just on this point, um, is there anything in particular that the commission? That hasn't been mentioned that you would like us to kind of clean up for public presentation? And then the second, is there any further feedback? We'll work on scheduling and logistics and everything else about an actual public. Series of listening sessions. Anything else that we need to know at this point?
I think we're good.
Yeah.
And then we had had in here something about beta for our information. And.
Yeah, it's the same, it's the solar application for the rooftop. It's the same that you saw in the fall and the city provided a letter of support. It's the next. Step in that process, another notification to the municipality step.
Okay, so we are adjourned. Thanks very much. Got through a lot tonight.